For the, uh, for the individual who died in Butler, Pennsylvania, fellow small town, just like here, you know, senseless act of political violence. So if everyone could just have a quick moment of silence. All right. And with that, I will bring the regular meetings for the city council of Dunsmere, California to order. It is six oh one and it is July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would you like to move off into roll call?
Councilmember Lucchese.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Present.
Councilmember Deusch.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaisler.
Here.
Mayor Clernow.
Present. All right. We do not have any special presentations or announcements this evening. So with that, we will move directly into public comment. This is a time for any member of the public who would make, who would like to make a comment on city business to do so. Um, I, we will hold everyone to three minutes. I will give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up. Um, I do ask that you hold any comment regarding item number ten, old business, or item number eleven, new business, until those items come around as there will be public comment time for each of the items listed on that, on that list. Um, so yeah, if you have any public comment for either the consent agenda or just general city business, uh, feel free to approach the podium. Please say your name and address when you begin your public comment. If you do choose to list your name and address, I will not start your time until you are done with listing your name and address. Um, the only thing I got. Sorry, did Jake address?
No, they didn't.
Um, this concerning, uh, the firing of James McIntyre. You know, to me, I, like I said to a couple of you guys, I'm a little confused about the process and, and I mentioned to somebody that, I understand there's a vote and then, uh, the city manager is supposed to follow the guidelines for that and, and make that happen. And in that process, we heard, uh, John Kenny, uh, say that we can get rid of him the very next week. Um, and Dustin made some excuses about not doing that immediately. And, um, and council member Giuliana, um, was very, um, I thought, did very well in recusing herself for those two pimes because the way I understand it, she works for Wyrica and didn't want to compromise that. But the next meeting, um, it came up about him being available again um, and not being able to find somebody else potentially at that point and have to continue to use him. And, uh, council member Giuliana actually defended that choice for some reason, and I didn't appreciate that because at that point, that should be comment that she should have stayed out of because of their relationship instead of defending the man to keep him here and helping Dunsmere or hinder Dunsmere, actually. But, uh, that should have been a better choice by you, I think, to not do that. And then also with Dustin not doing his job after unanimous vote to get rid of the guy, to continue to utilize him here locally. I think that was a pretty poor choice on his part and, uh, not doing his job correctly. So I think those are things we gotta look at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel. The grounds for the recall are as follows. Councilmember Luchesi fails to represent the citizens of Dunsmere. She has counseled city, council members as if they were F, as if she was city manager, city planner and city attorney. She has answered for the city staff and city professionals to fellow council persons at meetings and does not hold said city jobs. Um, nor does she qualify to do so as a city councilman. She recused herself on a building code inspector that was just brought up. Uh, as the chair of a sea solid waste task force, she did not represent the city of Dunsmere commercial and residential taxpayers, offered no considerations for impacts of rate increases um, of three at twenty-four and one at twenty. Um, and the citizens in the finished rate setting council member Luchesi has purposely ended contracts of bad faith with long-serving professionals, the city of Dunsmere, city attorney, city planner, parks and recreation and administrator. Anyway, the city attorney, as far as not having the city use it anymore. Mr. Chizzy, you are.
You.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, I don't want to preempt the city manager's report, but whoever gets credit for repainting and updating the city council chambers. When I moved here in two thousand eight and ended up sitting in one of the chairs as a city council member, it bothered me. I mean, what does it say about a city if they've got a peeled back ceiling where there was an obvious leak? And the windows are cracky and bad. And to redo it with classic colors to me is a big step forward on the pride issue. So congratulations to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other? Just Debbie, restart a minute. You're one of the ones to stand for the podium. And just, uh, we're doing everyone in the room first for public comment and then we will move to Zoom. When the time comes to do comments on Zoom, uh, if you would like to make a public comment, please signify by going to the reactions tab and raising your hand.
Look, hi, Debbie Spagnolo, forty-one twenty eight in Dunsmere. Again, I stand before you another month gone by, no professional response as to why I'm not on the agenda for the past seven months. Like I said before, I'm not a hard-boiled egg that takes steps done in three minutes. You have, you hired Mark Allen, the dog catcher, because he was supposed to be qualified, knows his job duties and have experience to perform them, right? Obviously not. You've hired an outside attorney from Sacramento or somewhere south of here for four hundred and ninety-eight an hour to teach Mr. Allen, quote unquote, how to clean up Dunsmere. Dunsmere has its own attorney and he should know the laws to be exercised and perform in job duties. Well, Mr. Allen should have been fired a very long time ago since he doesn't know the legal way to do his job, especially now with, with an outside attorney of four hundred and eighty-nine dollars an hour. Just like Mr. Ru, our now city manager, who was fired only six months after his position as city manager in Scottsburg, Scottsburg, City, Nebraska, for not performing his job. Seems to me the city officials do not have a conducive reform with the residents of Dunsmere at all. That's the main part of their job. I believe a total investigation from the grand jury and the eternal attorney general's office needs to be done like as in yesterday. Instead of the typical response that Mr. Allen gives, give or get an attorney. And again, I'm still waiting an answer why I have been the only citizen who had an abatement warrant to have my legally non-op, non-ruption's vehicle destroyed. It wasn't justifiable at all. Not illegal, not legal in my view of the law. So I'm still waiting and I still want to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Mark Riz, fifty-seven forty-four Dunsmere Avenue, Dunsmere. I, I recognize the next week is, is a town hall meeting. Um, unfortunately, I can't be there because I have a prior commitment that was made well before. But if I could speak briefly on, I, I, I know Cosmon has come up with plans for, um, for the city. It feels like they haven't really taken into to, to it a lot of considerations. They're comparing our city to other cities, but not really considering the uniqueness of our city. I have a plan that I think will benefit everybody in the city. And Justin, I asked you for meetings and we haven't had a chance to meet. I know you're very, very busy. Um, I asked Cosmon if I could talk to them about it and get it infused in the plan. And there, they said that they could only talk to stakeholders. Who's, I, I'm not understanding what stakeholders are. I believe those would be property owners. And since I own five properties, commercial properties in downtown, I think that would make me a stakeholder. I'm not sure what the process is, but we should work collaboratively together, all of us, all of the property owners, business owners in city and citizens in a plan which I recognize to some degree is what Cosmon is about, but I don't. Included. And it doesn't feel very good. And I recognize I can't be at the meeting. Is the meeting possible to, um, to get into on Zoom? I know I'm supposed to ask questions, but, um, I, I'm wondering if there's some way to get in that meeting.
We'll respond back whether or not it's available to Zoom after, when we get to council and staff comment. For now, I have positive time when we start here for you, though, if you have anything more you'd like to say.
Um, that's, the explanation of what I'm doing would, would take longer, but I, essentially, like, we're building a conference center. That was our intent for the thought leaders of the world, um, primarily appealing to Silicon Valley. I believe, um, we, we have a very, very unique approach solving some serious problems that they're doing. And everybody that I have spoken to has agreed that it would be really powerful and, and, and very good. They'd be bust up, how much, they'd be bust up as I'm not sure what you're doing about parking. But if lots of people came into town, if I opened my hotel, there suddenly wouldn't be enough parking if, if, if people staying at the hotel were coming by car. Um, I, I think there's a lot of challenges that need to be considered and overcome. And from what I could see, Cosmon has not done a very good job in doing that. Um, but I don't know it very well and I'm not able to speak with them. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? None. We will move to.
You got a little legs, give.
Dwight Bailey, five nine oh six Castle. I'm having trouble getting into your computer to get the agenda tonight.
That.
That's my comment. I'm just asking if it's possible to get in tonight.
There is an agenda right there.
Thank you. Having the same challenge. Is this one here?
Uh, we do need that copy up there. Do you have an extra copy of the agenda? Play around.
Yeah.
I think we got it sorted out.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further public comment in the room, uh, we'll move to Zoom. If you do want to make a comment, go to the reactions tab and raise your hand. Being none, I will close public comment. All right. With that, we will move on to item number five, council and staff comment. Attorney North.
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of June, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the sheriff's office provided four hundred and ninety-eight hours of service. Uh, we conducted two hundred and twenty-six calls for service. Those are also, also include self-initiated activity. That's up from a hundred and seventy last year. Uh, we took two case, twelve cases, which is over twice as much as, as the five last year. Eight citations, eight citations were issued, three of which were parking, one was for misdemeanor warrant, two were for traffic and two were fresh on view misdemeanor crimes. Uh, there were five misdemeanor arrests as well. Uh, we had two assaults, eight alarm calls, twenty-four disturbing the peace calls. That was actually up from last year's twenty. Uh, we did twenty-two patrol checks, eleven security checks, twenty-six school checks, which is boarding twice as much as last year. Uh, one traffic collision, nine trespassings, sixteen traffic stops. That's a pretty good ratio, sixteen traffic stops and two citations issued. So there's still a lot of warnings going out. Uh, and we conducted five welfare checks. Uh, it wasn't a major incident, but on, uh, June ninth, deputies responded to a fifty-six-year-old stowaway that was reported to be on the Amtrak train. Uh, when she refused to disembark, she ultimately went to jail, disembarked, but so.
She got disembarked.
That's it. All right. Thank you very much. City manager.
All right, Mayor and Council. It's been about a month since we've been here. Um, over the past month, staff has spent an inordinate amount of time dealing with, uh, Mr. Rubino's online inflammatory comments. Um, we have finished, uh, the road paving project for up around the downtown tank. So we're getting close to finalizing that. We should have that done by the end of the month. Um, we also, uh, new pavement went down, going to the botanical gardens today, and then also a big patch on Dunsmere Avenue. Um, just by the ball field, um, Public Works Financing is in the queue with USDA. Um, currently at the airport, we have, uh, the Air National Guard, uh, supporting Cal Fire. Um, for the Shelley fire, they have a medevac up there. Um, so we've been working with them to ensure they have what they need. Um, we had, uh, a number of water main leaks that we fixed, uh, you know, a couple on Dunsmere Avenue specifically that were a little larger and took some time. Um, we posted, uh, signs promoting Moss Bay Falls improvements. Uh, there is a typo. Uh, the new signs are being reprinted, but, uh, now, uh, people are engaging those signs up at Hedge Creek and then at the non-official, uh, entrance to Mossbury Falls. Also, Building Inspector, um, I have, uh, worked it out with the county and that we will be, uh, working on a, an interim six-month agreement with the county. And, uh, I've received that communication today and we're just kind of working through that agreement to get that settled. Um, in hopes of getting them started, uh, as soon as possible. And then, um, the council chambers is, uh, Mr. Arth mentioned. This was a part of our project and budget for last fiscal year. Um, we have all the materials that flooring is actually sitting in the fire hall. And, uh, so it won't be just, uh, this room. We are doing the hallway, the sheriff's department and also, uh, the fire hall. We'll all receive the same treatment, but we started here in, uh, in, uh, the council chambers. Um, there's a couple of other things I want to address, uh, particularly, uh, Mr. Juarez. And, uh, he sent an email address to the council. I forwarded that on because it was not, then make it to all the council members. It made it specifically to Mr. Rubino and to Mr. Kaisler. And apparently, Mr. Juarez has, uh, has, uh, been in discussion with them. But I need to address a few other issues before we get to the issue of, of him being not engaged by myself. Mr. Juarez and his corporation and his, um, all of his properties owes the city nearly twenty thousand dollars in past due utilities and code enforcement fines since November of two thousand twenty-three. He's the crux of why, of holding our downtown in a state of hostage. After the fire in Hotel Dunsmere in October of two thousand twenty-two, Mr. Juarez's building was red-tagged and remains that way this day. There's been little effort on his part to provide plans, comply with regulations or fix up his property. His level of care is apparent by the broken windows in numerous buildings and failing to protect them from the elements. Yet Mr. Juarez sends me an email that I am adding to the minutes, um, associated himself with Mr. Rubino and Mr. Kaisler. Mr. Juarez, in his email, also accuses Cosmon of not engaging him. That is absolutely incorrect. He actually got a personal one-on-one meeting with them, something no other stakeholder in the downtown got. Cosmon is not free. They are here because of a grant written by Giuliano Lucchese. They work with the city, for the city and all the stakeholders. Yet it is more of the same for Mr. Juarez and Happy Company, vision, vision, vision and no action. Additionally, Mr. Juarez has obtained legal counsel, so his engagement with staff can, is limited. So this is my response to Mr. Juarez's request and connections to Mr. Kaisler, Mr. Rubino. Your visions, while grand, have been only that. Your failure to act over the entire ownership of your five properties in downtown has become a burden to the taxpayers of Dunsmere. Your failure to pay your utilities is a burden on the other ratepayers. The city has been in this song and dance for decades now and it will not be placated anymore. The city council is determined to not allow your ownership of these properties to be the detriment of our downtown like you have done in Weed. Step up, take responsibility for your own assets and pay your bills. Provide the building plans and get a permit and get in compliance. I'm just asking you to take action. That's it. I don't need to talk about it. This conversation is no different than two years ago when I first started. Stop playing the victim, take action into coming into compliance, then we can talk vision. Stop being a burden to Dunsmere, to Weed and to the Siskiyou County. Step up or sell out. Additionally. Excuse me. Over the past two years, I've never seen such a pervasive level of harassment and abuse of power by elected officials over staff in my entire life. This has spread now to social media and now is incited a level of discontent that has led to extreme safety concerns for me, my three children, my wife and staff. Over the past six months, I have been threatened with harm, gotten a restraining order because of extortion, harassment and theft. I had an unauthorized entry into my home in Dunsmere in the last two weeks. And in the last seventy-two hours, I have had multiple people stalk my home in Dunsmere and in Lake Shastina, including multiple elected officials and their partners. And numerous people stopped and take pictures of my home. Mr. Rubino went as far as engaging my neighbor in which I have a known restraining order with him that if I would have been home, Mr. Cobbins would have been arrested for violation of the restraining order last night. Additionally, I've received letters that are anonymous attempting to intimidate, intimidate my wife as well as myself this week. This level of harassment and distress these few elected officials and former staff member have placed on my family, myself and my staff is grotesque. I am a city employee. I'm also a citizen of the United States and so are my wife and children. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I'm a disabled veteran and I uphold the laws of this city bound by my job, upholding ethics and morals. I am entitled to live a harassment and retaliatory free life that is protected by law. I call on all citizens to stand up to these bullies, manipulators and deceptors and call them out. I look forward to the adoption of the work-based violence policy at, towards the end of this meeting. That's all I have.
Councilmember Lucchese. Thank you. So just going to the public comment today about the building contract item, I believe the city manager kind of addressed that. We worked on an interim agreement with the Siskiyou County Building Department. There was another service, uh, we did interviews for the on-call planning, uh, contract. There was another entity within that that could also offer building services a little bit sooner, but it would have been extremely costly for us to do that. Uh, so, uh, the city manager took that over and worked with the county on an interim situation. That was hopefully cost-effective for everybody. Um, just want to make everybody aware that Siskiyou County is updating their general plan. And so they have a number of public engagement opportunities online. Uh, I don't have the website offhand at this moment, but I will try to get something. And if it would be okay for the city to share that on their Facebook page. We do have a number of citizens who, well, not our citizens, but county citizens who do have a Dunsmere address line and so may want to participate in that general plan process. Um, there's several other, uh, planning, uh, items going on at the county that, you know, it would be really great to have additional participation in. One of the items that we have coming up is the library that we have here in town. A lot of people don't realize that is a Siskiyou County library. It's not owned by the city. Um, it is operated by the, uh, Cisqui County. We do own the building. And so, uh, I've been trying to work with the library for a little while to get improvements to the building and just improve services generally. Um, but we have been kind of stalled on that because we are not the owner kind of manager of that. So, uh, did happen to catch our district two supervisor, Ed Balenzuela, on that and hopefully have a meeting with the mayor and Ed here soon to kind of talk about the county library item and bring that back to city council for more information, um, on some options to better help that entity out. Um, one of the reasons for that is the library and the pool are kind of two very large users of the community promotions funding, which is paid primarily through the TUT, which is a transient use tax, which is an additional sales tax. Um, that expires in two thousand twenty-six, so a lot of that funding is not going to be available unless we do another tax measure, um, which gets put onto the buyers within the city. Um, but just trying to look at other ways to fund those entities a little bit more long-term uh, and trying to address that now before two thousand twenty-six is kind of my hope, uh, working on those projects. The Union Pacific Rail yard cleanup is still going on. They're going to be removing one of the concrete retaining walls next week. They're continuing to do, they're continuing to backfill test as well as do groundwater testing. Um, oh yeah, thank you. Uh, and then to continue doing the backfill project. Uh, thank you to our Lola speakers, Stephen Decatur and Stephen Bryan. Uh, Lola is the league of local agencies. It's a quarterly meeting that all the cities attend and it basically just gets everyone together to coordinate a little bit better within Siskiyou County. I just want to thank our two speakers. Dunsmere hosted that. Um, and it was just really a great opportunity to see everyone on that topic. One of the things that, uh, Mr. Decatur, our hazard mitigation planner, uh, presented was the Cal Fire, um, getting, we are now the nine-hundredth, uh, firewise community within the state of California, which does get us a percentage off of our insurance. So when you go to get fire insurance next time, we're hopefully able to get you guys some cost savings on that. And then we're meeting with Cal Fire next week to coordinate a community event to celebrate the accomplishment as well as going to, uh, work for the city and state fire marshal to put together a news release for that. Um, so because of the state's new safer from wildfires program, the firewise designation will give you that, I believe it's a ten percent insurance premium discount and pushing more information out on that. Thank you for the reminder. And then thank you to everyone who did Second Saturday. Uh, I heard it was a really great event. I did not get a chance to go. I was at a different, uh, event that day. But, um, really thank you to everybody who puts that on. I know that's the Chamber of Commerce doing that uh, and a, a number of other business owners who are putting that on. So really big thank you for that. Also, um, congratulations to Kate Clother for, uh, becoming the new executive director for the chamber. Really excited for that. Um, I believe I got that right. Uh, one of the other, just the bad news side of it. We did apply for an adaptation planning grant, which was supposed to help with some of our green waste programming. And we received information from the state that we will not be funded through that grant because no one is getting funded through that grant. They cut it from the state budget. Uh, so we are morphing that project over to another EPA grant, uh, to be able to get funding for the SB thirteen eighty-three compliance, which is the new composting law and green waste project, um, as well as doing some fire hardening and then potentially some renewable energy projects throughout the. as well as doing some fire hardening and then potentially some renewable energy projects throughout the downtown that could go into that grant. The solid waste rate study, we're waiting on some administrative comments as we've discussed at previous meetings. The Blue Bag Program is no longer in effect because the Opportunity Center can no longer take really any recyclables at this point. So there is really no established supply chain for that. And so that has to be taken into consideration, as well as that item will come back at a future meeting for people to comment on before it goes to a Prop 218 protest vote. So there will be another opportunity to comment on that. Planning consultant contract should be coming back for city council consideration at the next meeting. We did have a number of consultants interview with us, and hopefully there'll be some good ones that we can bring on to help with some of our projects. And then, oh, and then just to let everyone know, the Pacific Crest Music Festival starts on July 26th, so we will have a number of musicians traveling around the city. Please leave friendly. They are from all over the world, and they, at the end of this whole two-week process, will be playing Saturday, August 3rd at 7:00 PM. As well as, I believe, there's also a show in Mount Chasta. I don't have the date for that, but we will have those musicians in town staying at different places. And I believe they're going to be going to the school and community center for a lot of the practicing, but please say hi. It's really great to have that program here and to continue another year of it. And I did hear about, there's some misinformation going around about the Community Resource Center. I just want to clear up really quick. So I have been personally meeting with Stephen Bryan of the Community Resource Center in an effort for them to purchase their building full-time. It is not a city activity. The city has not voted to do anything with that project. So I just wanted to clear that up, that if anything were to happen with the city, that does have to come back to the full council for consideration. Really, I'm a professional planner by trade, and so I do try to write grants for a lot of the different programs and entities here in town as much as I can. On that note, I did not write the EDA or the EDVG grant for Cosmont. Just really quick, that was Quentin Gaddy at SEDC, but it's okay.
Sorry, Quentin.
Thank you. But, and I just kind of want to end with one brief note. You know, there's a quote from George Bernard Shaw that kind of just puts into perspective what I've been experiencing the past couple of weeks, which is just, you know, "The true joy in life is being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one and being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clot of ailments and grievances complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy." I am of the opinion that life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, that's really my purpose here and my passion. And I want to be thoroughly used up before I die. For the harder I work, the more that I live. And I rejoice in a life that is lived for its own sake. And I really think of life as a candle. Is not a candle. It's sort of a splendid torch, which I have pulled up for the moment that I want to make burn as brightly as possible before handing it to future generations. And so I really hope that people are inspired to really work for this community. It's a really lovely community. It's been really supportive of me in some of the hardest times of my life, and I'm going to continue to help it regardless of if I sit in this seat or not. And so if anyone needs help with anything, I'm happy to help here. That's my intent. You know, if you think that something has been misconstrued or you're unhappy with something, I'm happy to talk about it. But really, my purpose here is for you, and I'm just going to continue to do that. So thank you for your time, and that is my.
Thank you.
Just so far, the city managers referred to me when I'm late driving down the street. I'm working up in the neighborhood, and we were talking to the neighbor about this British flag. And I guess I got a phone call from the mayor that he's got cameras on his house and surveillance, and he is so scared that he called and said that he was upset. Why was I driving down the street? Really? I was driving down the street looking at jobs. Mr. Mayor, you said Kenny was going to be here tonight, our city attorney. How come he's not here?
Unfortunately, he had another engagement. He was going to make it here, but something scared him.
No, he says that he's been kept out of the loop a lot. And he said, he also said, he sent our city manager a letter saying that he could fire the city. That man can fire anybody at any time except the city attorney. So when we fired, when council unanimously agreed to fire the building inspector, Giuliano says something about the 60-day contract behind it. John Kenny sat there right there and said, no, we fired. And then he said he didn't need to come back next week. I asked him, why didn't you come back next week? He said he sent a letter with us. So here we were instructed that we can fire the city building inspector who's not qualified, but yet we didn't. I kind of got a problem with that. So in the Cosmont, there's been a couple of people that say Cosmont's not really not being accepted, receptive. They're not working with the people. So that's something we need to take a look at. And another thing is how come we got two attorneys? I remember, yeah, we voted for it, but in retrospect, we got a city attorney. What do we need a city attorney another one for? Oh, yeah, that was right. So we could get the code enforcement shit going. And then last, but not least, well, not last, because I would like to say that we need to really zoom that town hall toward throughout a week. There are people that can't do it. So if they can zoom there, at least they'd be able to respond, and we could get all of them. Now, last but not least, Ms. Spagnolo.
Yes.
As a councilman, I would like to apologize to you. I really get tired of seeing you come up here tonight. I really, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to maybe make, put on a table, agenda. Could we have a discussion with her, council, as to what the hell's going on? And we can do it publicly, however you want to do it, once and for all. Let's answer the woman's questions. Brew Fest is coming up, so see you then. That's all I got.
I'll go over to you just one quick second. Will the town hall be on Zoom? Will there be a Zoom option for people to join in on that?
Yes, I believe that's the intention, is to try and make it via Zoom. We are holding at the community center, so we we're working to have the technology there, but it if we will still have a Zoom option. It won't be the same capacity as what we have here, but we'll still have that available.
I'd like to start off by bringing up something that kind of was keyed by Mrs. Casey. When the Resource Center here in Dunsmere is looked at by the rest of the county, the other cities, and I'm on the board and have been on the board of the collaborative that runs all the resource centers. And Dunsmere is the jewel in the county. And part of that and part of the thing that all the other city councils can't seem to come to, and Steve mentioned this just the other day at the Dunsmere Community Care Team meeting, is that each one of the council members has an own investment and wanted to make it work. There wasn't ever a need to try and tell the city council that the Resource Center needs to be supported, and different people have stepped up in different ways. And I just want to let you know that that's, that's something that is appreciated. And also as a an accolade to Mr. Arth, the, 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 the community garden out there has people from all over the world coming to look at it. It's, it's a joy to look at, and it's not like other ones where, you know, you're a community garden, somebody buys a plot, and it's their plot. This whole thing is designed on a different level, and it's really a jewel in our community, and I'm hoping everyone is extremely proud of that. I do want to point out that at the library this, this Saturday at 2:00, there's a really incredible presentation being put on by Anhel Gomez. If you're not familiar with him, he's the person primarily familiar, responsible for Talendali Park existing. And what's really remarkable about him is that he is the great-great-grandson of the two people that started the Upper Soda Springs Resort back in the 1860s. So he goes back to the very beginning of this city where there were just a few people here in a building, and he's related. He also went to Harvard Law, so he's an established lawyer. And what he's going to be doing on Sunday, I'm sorry, on Saturday at 2:00, is giving a presentation on Edna Massan, who was his great-great-grandmother, and on her as a force of nature and how she helped create the city. There may be standing room only at the library. I know Karen is kind of concerned about that, but if you really are interested in the city history, I encourage you to do that. Along the same lines, following up on building Dunsmere's future, we're working on some history projects. One of them that I'm working on right now with both the Resource Center and the high school with Ray Keller is a project to do oral histories. And the idea would be, and I've already reached out to Ray, and I've got a proposed project planned for it, lays everything out. But the idea would be to hold sessions in the, in the council, I'm sorry, in the meeting room at the library and to have in front of them a little computer with all the colorized photos that we've gone through. And then the idea with Ray is that he would identify some students that could do these interviews for their community service. And so the whole point would be that we can collect all of that. One of the things I was really tuned into is the fact that there is such an incredible history, and most of the people alive around here have no idea about it, and the ones that are still alive that do. A lot of alien abductions. They seem to be disappearing. Another thing is that I wanted to give an update on the landing page for the downtown hotspots. I've checked with Vive, and the process from their standpoint is, once we have a URL address, I just give that to them, and they'll go ahead and make that happen. On one hand, I've, following up on Giuliano's mention of Kate Clother, I think it's an exciting move on the part of the, the chamber. She's a very young, vibrant person who loves this city, and I think she's going to do a tremendous job in her, in her position. I've talked with her about the landing page, and I originally thought that that Discover Siskiyou would be the best people to actually design the landing page, but then it turns out that Kate also is a web designer. So she's offered to take on that part of it. So I'm going to be working on that. Unfortunately, she had a death in the family, and so she's not available this week, but I do plan on doing that, and my goal is to get the landing page up as soon as possible. The first thing we'll be doing along the lines is to get a once we get the URL is to go off and get a bunch of stickers and placards and everything else we can with the QR code on it. So everywhere anyone walks around, they can see that, and they log into it, and then the whole idea is obviously to keep them in town, keep them spending money, give them all the reasons. And the final thing I'll bring up then is that also brings up something I've been working on for about a year now, and it finally came to fruition. There is a particular piece of software that I became familiar with. It's not totally expensive. It's only about $100 a month, but I didn't think we had that kind of money to spend on it. But it turns out that I was able to get Discover Siskiyou to buy it. And what this basically will provide, not only with the city of Dunsmere, but ultimately with the whole county, is a place where all of the information about events, tours, history, businesses, restaurants, lodging, is all in this one system and updated so that if you're sitting in, in Mount Chasta and you pick up your phone and they say, hey, look, it's something's going on in Dunsmere. Let's do that. So that's what I'm moving towards to have that, and the whole idea would be to capture the people. When you look at the idea of having tourists in our economy the way it's set up, you kind of look at them and say that, well, they're going to have their Google. They're going to be able to Google and find all the information. The real key is to capture them. You don't want them to say Google because they're not going to give you any reason to stick around. So the whole idea is, especially in an area down here where we don't have cell phone, is to get this up and running so that as people move around, especially the young folks with smartphones, they'll fit right in, they'll stay, and they'll spend more money. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief as I'm playing with a cold this afternoon. I just wanted to encourage everyone to attend the Town Hall for Downtown Revitalization and Economic Development next Wednesday at 5:00 PM. It'll be a wonderful opportunity to engage with council in a workshop to go over how we're going to plan our economic prosperity going forward. I'm very excited about talking with the downtown building owners and business owners regarding the possibilities for Downtown Improvement District and what that might look like. So I encourage everyone to attend. I've been inviting everybody I meet, but please tell everyone we'll be doing this event. It'll be the best opportunity to engage in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to keep mine fairly short today. We've got a long meeting, so first off, Brew Fest, August 3rd. We're looking for volunteers. We're looking for attendees. It should be an amazing event. We've got some great bands this year. Have thanks to Len Forman. He went to a concert and signed up a great band that he saw, so I'm really looking forward to hearing him. Next, kind of tied in with the Brew Fest is, that event is partly put on by the Chamber of Commerce. So I have had the opportunity to work with our new executive director for the chamber, Kate Clother, at our last, I believe, two or three meetings. So far, she has really impressed me, and I'm looking forward to seeing what she does with that organization. Lastly, as a couple of other people have already touched on, is the Cosmont meeting next Wednesday at the Community Center. Hope to see everyone there.
It's the what?
Cosmont Center, Wednesday, Community Center. Hope to see everybody there.
Thanks.
Yep. All right, with that, we will move on to committee reports. We did have a finance committee meet. Did we have us in that time?
Yeah, I think they met twice, didn't we?
We did. Yes, we did. What we met exclusively focused on future items on the agenda.
Okay, so we'll just save it for then then. All right, any other committees that met in that time? Nope. Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, June 20th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. That will move on to item number eight, the Consent Agenda, which tonight consists of two items to check register for 615 through 712 of 2024. And item number B, Local Transportation Claim for to allow counties to release funds to city. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda passes. We do not have a public hearing today. With that, we'll move on to item number 10, Old Business. First item, item number A, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance 577 regarding fireworks.
All right, Mayor and Council, we had this at our last meeting, and this is the second reading of the ordinance. Staff recommends approval.
No questions? Questions or anything like that before we move to public comment?
No questions.
All right, with that, I'll open up this item to public comment. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Same rules as general public comment, three minutes, 30-second warning. We'll do anyone in the room first, then followed by Zoom. With that, I will open up this item to public comment.
Hi, Ms. Spagnolo, again. On the fireworks, I was here for the last time when you guys were talking about it. And I think, Matthew, you wanted to see about how many actual fires were actual happened, did some research on it and stuff like that. So how did it go this Fourth of July? Were there any horrible things that happened, like fires, or did anybody get caught with fireworks in the backseat of their car to get a ticket? Or those are some of the other things that were talked about. Is that what it's still going to be? No fireworks? You get caught with the firework that you legally bought? You're still going to be in trouble for it? Or do you guys make any plans about having a place to have fireworks instead of not having fireworks? Did you guys do anything like that at all about this resolution? Because it seemed pretty rule by rule by rule by rule, do you, no, 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 no. And like I said it the last time, it was Fourth of July. It's the United States birthday. It's freedom. If we can have some guidelines for it and still keep it going, stealing off Dunsmere Avenue where you can have firework or the park or something. Give somebody something instead of taking away. That's all I'm saying, because I, after listening to you guys last time, that resolution is not so great, I don't think. There's too many no, 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 no's in it. I would really consider not going through it until you get a better response about how to work things out. That's all.
The further public comment on this item?
White Bailey, 5906 Castle. I would like, I'm not speaking for or against this item, but I do want to acknowledge that there over this direction that evening, early in the evening, there were approximately 45 or 50 skyrocket shot off. But I do want to acknowledge that they're over this direction that evening, early in the evening, there were approximately forty five or fifty skyrocket shot off. At about ten o'clock at night coming down my street, Castle Avenue proceeding to Shasta Avenue and down forward. There were a group of juveniles that about every hundred yards lit off a firecracker. That continued for approximately thirty five minutes. So I'd just like to report that there was. Incidents, whether they reported, whether they're acknowledged or not, they are acknowledged now.
Thank you.
Peter, our fifth eight five nine Sacramento Avenue. I strongly support the ordinance. I own a number of properties in Dunsmere. Formerly, they were all insured by Nationwide Insurance. Nationwide Insurance pretty much redlined Dunsmere, so every single property is now on California Fair Plan. I'm very grateful to Councilmember Lou Casey. You now have a staff member that's working on wildfire mitigation measures. That may result in a 10% reduction in insurance premiums. But there are different ways to honor the Fourth of July other than using safe and sane or hazardous fireworks. And I think we can adapt in the name of not burning down our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See no one in the room or no one on Zoom. I will close public comment on this item. We're jumping here just one second on one of the public comment items. I did, in regards to Debbie's comment, I did actually have a chance to speak to. Individual who has worked for fire departments his entire life as firefighter throughout the whole process. He's actually the individual who runs and coordinates the Mount Chasta fireworks display. He said he was aware of some fireworks or fires that had been started by residential fireworks. He couldn't point me towards any individual like article or link or anything like that. His big takeaway was safety, fireworks are only as safe and sane as people need them. That's the, my answer to that. Yeah. You had something you wanted to add?
I want to be as clear as I can. I 100% support this ordinance. The last thing I want to do is say gee, shuck, somebody shot off a fireworks and it burned the city down. Last thing, my God. You talk about how many fires have been started by fireworks. How many trains have spilled noxious chemicals into a river that took three to four years to come back? I don't want to have Dunsmere be one of those places where some kid set off something. And it killed everything else around here because it could happen. I, whenever I hear the the fire things go off, this one thought goes through my head. Perhaps everything has to burn down. And it's just that fear and I don't want to live that way. And so I'm going to wholeheartedly vote yes on this because. There are certain things that are not worth it and the joy of hearing things go pop, pop is not worth the negative if it ever happens. Thank you.
Any other further council discussion?
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm going to reiterate my thoughts from before. Well, I do appreciate the need to limit fireworks during our fire season. I find this ordinance goes a little bit too far when it comes to. Outline the possession and or storage of something that's otherwise legal in the state of California. I just find that problematic. So I will be abstaining from this as I did last time.
I move to adopt the ordinance five seven seven. The ordinance of the city council of the city of Dunsmere. Adding chapter nine point one five, title of fireworks and pyrotechnics devices. And then we read the ordinance by title.
Second.
It has been moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
For the record, that was four ayes and one of p. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number B, resolution twenty twenty four dash eleven to apply for community development block grant. For housing rehabilitation and storm drain planning.
Okay, all right, counsel. So this item kind of came up last time. You entered into an agreement with Great Northern. So this is essentially just the resolution that says we want to move forward with the process and apply for the grants that were previously stated. So in the staff report, you do see there was a couple of comments made. It still remains staff recommendation to move forward with the with code enforcement slash housing rehabilitation program and a storm drain program. Yeah, we've got everybody muted. Yeah.
Could you give for the people that maybe aren't familiar with having read this little overview of what this funding is and what it would do?
Okay, I can, yeah. So CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. It's a federal program. It's given through states. You have to meet certain requirements. It's only for certain programs. Further?
That's good.
Okay, yeah. So it's essentially a grant. This one, we're looking for our storm, storm drain planning, potentially have storm drain systems come into play. And then the other one is like a housing rehabilitation. With some code enforcement aspects.
Who might be able to take advantage of?
Everybody that's in the city.
I mean, what kind of thing might it do is what I'm saying. In other words, what kind of repairs? So people out there say, oh, that's me. What kind of things?
So, so some of the things in a housing rehabilitation program that you can cover is like, sometimes it's a roof or it's insulation or new siding. And also could be like any kind of energy efficiency upgrades on your interior. So there's a lot of things and some of it's income dependent on whether they qualify or not. But, you know, a good portion of our community does qualify and we haven't had a housing rehabilitation grant, I think it was sixteen years or something like that. It's been a while. It's been a while. And so that what it does is there's actually like a, we, as a part of that, they have to own the house for a certain numbers of year, number of years. And then that that portion will be forgiven, you know, if they, if it happens before that, then they have to repay back the program. You know, like if they sell their house after two years instead of holding it for 10 or whatever, you know, so there's, there's some rules that apply. But, you know, this, the six hundred twenty eight thousand will go a long ways because typically there's a, there's a cap per house, right? There's like maybe a twenty five or fifty thousand dollar cap. And so that's some of the things that the program will outline if we do get the application.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking obviously is that I want the people out there to realize this is something that we're doing, not because of whatever, whatever, but something that could actually directly benefit them if they're in need.
Yeah, yeah, it's a direct benefit. I mean, there's similar programs you can do for, for businesses, but this one is directly towards housing. Because that's, that seems to be a high priority for our community and we want to make sure we can, you know, try and support it and hopefully that we get approved for it.
Thank you.
Any other further council questions before I open up to your public comment? All right, with that, I will open up this item in public comment, same rules as before, three minutes, thirty second warning. Please state your name and address and please limit discussion to this item. With that, I will open it up.
Jay Press, fifty three six. Had a little red flag pop up when I heard code enforcement. So with this grant, are we going to be screwing with our local neighbors again with more of this stuff going on that Dustin's been? Part of with Mark Allen stealing cars and doing things like that because it's getting kind of out of control. And, and I know it's been hushing down a little bit lately because we've been rattling cages, but when I hear that, that kind of throws the flag up. It's like, we can't keep doing this. You know, we want to build the town up, which sounds like this grant is part of that. But if it's going to involve screwing with your neighbor and then not understanding why those neighbors are coming by his house and him crying up here. I don't understand how we can't figure that out. We're all here together to help each other, not to inhibit somebody from doing something good. But to help people do something good. So we need to work together. So if that's, if any part of that has to do with code enforcement to screw with any of our neighbors. I don't think we need anything to do with it, especially if he's in control of it. Thank you.
Any other further public comments? See?
Daddy speaking all again. When you talk about a grant, so does that mean a person has to go to you guys and apply for the grant? And then what you said about code enforcement, who's going to make the decision of what is done and what's not done? How much is allotted and all that? Because if Mark Allen has anything to do with it, who knows where the money's going to go and what's going to happen? Man is not trustworthy and shouldn't be employed by the city any longer.
Thank you. Any other further public comments? See none? I will close discussion on this item.
Again, I want to be clear about this. This is a pot of money that the federal government wants to give to communities. Community development, that's what it is. It's a grant. This is the way that the federal government takes money that they collect from you and give it out into various ways. What this program will do on two sides, one is that it'll help us go off and do an analysis to make sure our storm drains are up to date. So that if there's a flood, we don't damage properties. That's what they want to have done and we want that to have done. So we want that money. The second one is if something, for some reason, you're a person with limited funds and you've got a problem with your house. Like a roof or something like that, there would be a process to apply for that. It doesn't have to do with us controlling it or a code enforcement. It's a process that the federal government sets up so people here and citizens can take advantage of the money that they need and that's what this vote is all about. It's not about anything else.
And before I jump with, before I jump over to Dustin, feel free to correct me on this. I believe the code enforcement portion of this is actually where if one of the triggers that allows someone to be eligible for this grant is if they're low income, they own their house. And.
It's a trigger.
They aren't able to keep up, we'll say the maintenance on it, it gets to the point where they need code enforcement, they could apply to this grant. As a remedy to the code enforcement to get that work done. So basically it's the work needs to get done or there's something that's not up to code. They can come to the city and be like, hey, I don't have the money to do this and they could apply for this grant to get that work done. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my understanding of what it meant by code enforcement.
Right, that a lot of the code enforcement, that is, that is what it would be associated with. And then as, as per your, your question, Debbie, related to an application process, yes, there would be an application process and that would be. Through Great Northern. So Great Northern, we've contracted with them to complete the application. And then once that, if we get approved, then they would administer the program for us. So we would, we would market out to the community and then all the application process would go through Great Northern and they would do all the qualifications and everything there. As, right, yeah, there, I mean, there would be some restrictions, like if you sold your house in two years, you may have to repay some of that back. But it's focused on, on people who are long-term residents and stuff like that, or want to be long-term residents or income qualified. So, yeah, so most, most people would qualify and not have to pay anything back.
Good, good.
Is there any discussion on this item or?
I move we adopt resolution two thousand twenty four eleven, a resolution approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement. And any amendments there, there in two, from the two thousand twenty three and or two thousand twenty four funding year of the state CDBG program.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. That's the last old business item and we'll be moving on to item number eleven, new business. We have three items, but before we do move into item number eleven, it is seven oh three, I'm just going to put us into a five minute recess. We will re-adjourn, I'm sorry, it is seven oh four. I will put us back into order at seven. All right, it is seven oh nine and I am bringing this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council back into order. And we are jumping into item number eleven, item number A, for new business, item number A, censure of Treasurer Rabino. Before we get into the item though, I just kind of want to outline to everyone how this is going to proceed this evening. So first, I will introduce the items and read the memo that was posted in the agenda. Second, we will open the item to council for statements and clarifying questions. Item number, or part three, we will go to Mario, or sorry, I apologize for that, Treasurer Rabino. And allow him to make a statement and ask questions of the council and in return as well, I do ask everyone. All questions are directed to the chair. I will not be filtering any of the questions, but just in the interest of. Keeping everything going and not talking over each other. Just please, any questions go, you know. Chair, mayor, I have a question for, state the name and then we can proceed from there. There will also be no time limit for Treasurer Rabino's statement. This isn't like public comment where it's three minutes. He will have as much time to speak as he wants. Item or part number four will be public comment. Public comment will be held to the usual three minutes for all members of the public. After public comment, Mario will have a chance to address any public comment that does come up. And then after that is done, there will be council discussion. All right, with that, I will, we will get into the item. All right, subject, request for seizure, request for censure of Treasurer Mario Rabino. This memo supporting evidence and enclosed resolution will serve as the basis for my request. Of the city council to censure Treasurer Mario Rabino for using his position as treasurer to provide inaccurate or misleading information to the public, staff and other city officials. Using his position to misrepresent the intent of the city to the public, abuse of staff and failing to timely inform staff and council with information that may impact city finances. Incident supporting censure. On one eighteen, Treasurer Rabino posted the following to Facebook. So now is the time. Last night, Dunsmere City Council considered spending a budgeted fifteen thousand dollars on Siskiyou Economic Council. There is a letter of understanding and a list of all the things they will be working on. In fifteen years, an SEEDC gives good meeting. Knows all the council's names and comes before council early to make sure they get their funds and makes all kinds of promises and never deliver any real content in my mind. So tired, parks and recreation remain unfunded since last year, can't get their promised meeting with council, library funds got cut, everybody got funds cut. But SEEDC gets funded in full. Council continues to prioritize non-local events and organizations first, end of quote. Contrary to his comment of everybody got funds cut, but SEEDC gets funded full, the council had not given the fifteen thousand in funding. It has not awarded the funding in the seven months since. After being confronted, he did capitalize the word considered in his original post. He has made no attempt to correct the post since, thus using his position to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public, staff and other city officials. On one thirty, Treasurer Rabino posted the following to Facebook. Wow, city council, what is going on? Are you watching? Are you involved in this community? Are we as a city handling things as best we can? Recent events show the people not. Please show some control. Treasurer Rabino posted the following in the comments. Did you pursue the ordinance city manager using staff building permits, use permits is going to find vacant homes in Dunsmere? And of course, well-received fortunes of tax revenues from the second homeowner's three thousand dollars a pop. The vacant housing tax was brought up during a discussion of potential revenue measures that could be considered. This was met with serious resistance from council and the number of three thousand dollars was not. A number that was discussed in that meeting, thus using his position to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public, staff and or other city officials. On two twenty four, two thousand twenty four, Treasurer Rabino posted the following to Facebook. I told you, here it comes. The nondescript of two eighteen refers to discussion on your garbage bill increase. Two eighteen is the name now used for the process that came up or came out of Prop two eighteen. The Right to Vote on Taxes Act. Obviously, the city did feel it necessary to explain in the agenda. I mean, we, they are working for us. We trust, right? If it was me, I was on council and I said as chairman, I would have done, this is going against the intention of the Brown Action two eighteen process. I would remove it from the agenda as for it to be published with better explanation. It is a serious breach of the citizen right to know. Treasurer Rabino thought the item was on business items and not the consideration of future agenda items section. Two eighteen was also in reference to two eighteen review that Treasurer Rabino himself suggested adding to the consideration of future agenda items section. And thus using his position to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public and or other city officials. From mid-spring to present, multiple individuals have come to me as Treasurer Rabino had told them inaccurate information regarding the city finances. First, they informed me that they had been, that he had been saying that the city was losing approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. After informing these individuals that this was not the case, Treasurer Rabino then started claiming that the city had eight hundred thousand dollars in unbudgeted revenues. Such as in the following comment on Facebook in regard to a discussion on potential tax measures posted on or around six twenty five, two thousand four. With eight hundred thousand dollars of unbudgeted revenues, why do they need it? These numbers are not correct, thus Treasurer Rabino is using his position to. These numbers are not correct, thus Treasurer Rabino is using his position to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public, staff, and other city officials. On 6/26, Treasurer Rabino sent a series of emails and instructions to the administrative assistant and deputy city clerk. This account, this encounter was inappropriate for an elected official and bothered the employee in question who complained to the city manager. Treasurer Rabino has had abusive contact with staff dating back to at least December of 2022. On 6/26/2024, Treasurer Rabino posted the following to Facebook. Dustin Reeve, please support Armaducci's Cafe, it is the wish of the council and the community and the city of Dunsmere. He then commented on the post, they, city, are trying to close down the store, why they are just so righteous. This was a relatively minor issue that did not nearly reach the level, the level of, city are trying to close down the store. The issue was addressed quickly, and the city was never considering closing the store. Treasurer Rabino both used his position to provide incorrect, misleading information to the public, staff, and other city officials, and used his position to misrepresent the intent of the city to the public. While discussing putting a transit, or, sorry, on 7/8/2024, while discussing putting a transient occupancy tax on the ballot in November, Treasurer Rabino told the Finance Committee that he had information that the current TOT tax that the city, or that the city has may not be compliant with state law. He told the committee that he had been given this information on numerous, or by numerous individuals, with the implication that he had known for some time, thus failing to timely inform staff and council of information that may impact city finances. The following is an excerpt from a Facebook post Treasurer Rabino posted on the subject. I had a nasty argument with Blake and the city manager about our old TOT tax pass, I believe before 218 took effect. My request was please do due diligence and pass the old ordinance to the city attorney to see if it's still viable before council proposed increase. City manager and myself had discourse. He somehow thought I was inferring it had to go under 218 utility process. They tried to dismiss my request by conflating it. I told him, I'm not an attorney, and neither is he. This post leaves out that the discourse with the city manager also revolved around how long the treasurer, or, sorry, who, or how long the Treasurer Rabino knew this information, who he learned it from, and why it had not been brought to staff or council's attention prior to this point, thus using his position as treasurer to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public, staff, and/or other city officials. On 7/12/2024, Treasurer Rabino posted the following to Facebook. Took me almost four years of concentrated effort to get a roof on the library. This city doesn't need another old building, followed by this comment. A city official and a city council member met with Mr. Arth to consider options on buying a building in the commercial district. That seems to need a new roof. As this issue has never been brought before council, and the city official, and a city official did not attend any such meeting, this is yet another example of Treasurer Rabino using his position as treasurer to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public, staff, and/or city officials. The first duty of an elected official is to the truth, while politicians at a national level often forget this, in a small community, we cannot. This is not a complete list of all the instances of Treasurer Rabino's misconducts, but I assert it is enough to establish a pattern. I do not believe that when exposed to the light of day, the people of this town will support the manipulative conduct of Treasurer Rabino has been using. Based on the incidents outlined in this memo, I formally request to censure Treasurer Rabino. With that, we will move on to council statements, and I do have a statement that I would like to read. It is a little bit more personal than what I felt, or it is coming of more of my personal opinion than what I felt was appropriate for the agenda, and also builds, or provides context to what was said in the memo. Introduction. During my time on city council and the finance committee, I have observed, I have observed a pattern of unethical behavior from the city treasurer, Mario Rabino. On numerous occasions, I have witnessed him using misleading information, half-truths, or outright lies to manipulate the citizens of the city. Other council members and myself. He has openly admitted to me, he planned on lying to the public. He claimed that he was going to run in the upcoming election, then not go through with it. And if I told anyone, he would say I was lying. To this day, I find this statement confusing, as I don't understand what he could possibly achieve by doing this. I believe that national politics have no place in a small town. However, I feel this statement made by Treasurer Rabino after a finance committee meeting should be shared. I don't like Trump's policies, but I like his tactics. You can expect something Trumpian from me. I will leave it up to the citizens of the community to decide what that means, as to this day, I do not know. When I was elected, I ran specifically on a platform opposing the factionalism that has torn this town apart for decades. It is my belief that if allowed to continue, Treasurer Rabino's actions will lead to a return of the factionalism that has plagued the city. Before I outline my case for censorship, I would like to make a couple of things clear to ensure the people, or to ensure that people understand my motivations for making this censure. One, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution states, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the or the right of the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. When an individual gets elected, they become the government. When they speak in a public forum to their constituents, they are speaking as the government. When the treasurer of a city discusses issues that relate to the city finances, they speak as the government. The government of this city has lied and misled to its citizens. It has done this in the form of statements and social media posts from the treasurer. This censure is not intended to infringe on the First Amendment rights of Mario Rabino, but is intended to reprimand a portion of the government of this city. Number two, I do not believe in any way that Treasurer Rabino is a bad person. He has served the community of this town for years, sacrificing his personal time. As someone who has watched Dunsmere politics since I was in high school and has participated for the last several years, I do not believe that someone would suggest themselves with many years and as much torment in city politics as Treasurer Rabino has, without caring deeply for this town. On a personal note, for those of you who do not know, my father, David Klarno, who opened a local downtown business and owned it for 13 years, has been battling cancer since 2020. Treasurer Rabino has often extended heartfelt sympathy, sympathy to both my father and myself throughout this time. I am very appreciative and thankful for this. Taking this action pained me greatly, but as mayor, I have to put my personal feelings aside and do what I feel is best for the city and its citizens. Number three, I have been aware of Treasurer Rabino's intention to start a recall of Councilor Lucchese since the middle of last month. I have been considering censuring Treasurer Rabino since February due to the statements that I will go over shortly. At that time, I decided not to censure him, a decision I now regret. Last week, I decided that censure was now necessary due to his unethical behavior becoming more brazen. Behavior such as withholding information critical to city finances and willingness to use an organization like the Community Resource Center as a tool to attack a political opponent. This censure is not a condemnation of any position that he may or may not have, only a condemnation of the manipulative tactics he has used. I was extremely hesitant to do this so close to an election, but as mayor, I had to do what I felt was right. Actions warranting censure, providing inaccurate information regarding city finances. And I do apologize if some of this does repeat from what I put in the memo. This spring, members of the council, members of this council and citizens of the community began coming to me as Treasurer Rabino informed them that the city was squandering its financial reserves. As former chair of the Finance Committee and mayor, these individuals wanted clarification and for me to take action if this was the case. Treasurer Rabino had told them that the city had squandered approximately $800,000 of the city's general fund reserves. I informed that this was a misrepresentation of the current state of the city's finances. After reviewing the city's finance, or the city's most recent financial reports, I came to the determination that the city's finances were relatively close to balance. Soon after I corrected this information, Treasurer Rabino started telling people that the city had received $800,000 in unbudgeted revenues. He stated this as recently as 6/25/2024 in the following comment on Facebook while discussing potential tax increases. With $800,000 of unbudgeted revenues, why do they need it? In the general fund, the difference is less than 10% of the claimed amount when looking at the amended budget, and less than a third when looking at the original budget. While increased revenue is a factor why the general fund does not have the original projected deficit, the main reason is that over half a million dollars' worth of expenditures were cut from the budget. I see two explanations for this. Either Treasurer Rabino is providing incorrect information to the public, or he is not keeping track of city finances. Personally, I would guess it is the former, as with $800,000 of unbudgeted revenues, why do they need it? It's a lot more effective way to combat a hotel tax increase than we had to cut half a million dollars. SEEDC. On 118/2024, the Siskiyou County Economic Development Council came before the city council requesting funding. As this was a financial matter, the request was sent to the Finance Committee for analysis and review. The next day, on the 19th, Treasurer Rabino posted. So now is the time, last night, Dunsmere City Council considered spending a budgeted $15,000 on Siskiyou Economic Council. There is a letter of understanding and a list of all the things they will be working on. Been 15 years, and SEEDC gives a good meeting, knows all the council's names, it comes before the council early to make sure they get their funds, and makes all kinds of promises and never delivered real content in my mind. So tired, Parks and Recreation remain unfunded since last year, can't get their promised meeting with the council. Library got funds cut, everybody got funds cut, but SEEDC gets funded in full. Council continues to prioritize non-local events and organizations first. As a new mayor at the time, I decided to ask Treasurer Rabino to correct the post, as I felt it was extremely misleading. After some back and forth, he capitalized the word "considered," but did not change any of the other misleading language or statements. I pointed out to him that as a member of the Finance Committee, he had the ability to help set the amount the SEEDC would be funded, if they would be funded at all. I pointed out that along with SEEDC funding, there were several other issues that were important to the community on the Finance Committee agenda, such as discussing adding TUT or TOT tax increases to the November ballot. I finished my comment with, as, as public officials, both you and I have a responsibility to inform people when they can give input on issues, not just point out that they exist. Treasurer Rabino then decided to recuse himself from this item, as he had discussed it in public. As Treasurer Rabino often discusses items in public that then come before the Finance Committee and not recuse himself, I must question his motivations for doing so in this case. In Finance Committee, it was decided that due to the deficit predicted in the budget, the committee would recommend not funding SEEDC until later in the year, when we had a clearer idea of the financial situation. This council meeting is seven months to the day from the original council meeting in January. To this day, the council has not given the SEEDC the $15,000 they requested in January. This makes the motivations behind this initial statement even more questionable. Over the past seven months, he has made no attempt to correct this statement beyond capitalizing the word "considered," and anyone who sees it without reading the comments may still be misled. While discussing funding the SEEDC, Treasurer Rabino and I had discourse regarding the pros and cons of funding the SEEDC, and I informed him of a grant program for small businesses that many Dunsmere businesses had taken advantage of. After this, Treasurer Rabino proceeded to post on Facebook claiming businesses could get $20,000 if they called the grant program administrator. He also allegedly called the granting agency as a city official and questioned them on the program. The grant program has very specific rules regarding how communications must be done, and this carelessness threatened a program that provided over $133,000 worth of grants to small businesses in Dunsmere in the 23/24 budget year alone. Vacant housing tax. On January 30th of this year, Treasurer Rabino posted to Facebook, wow, city council, what is going on? Are you even watching? Are you involved in this community? Are we, as a city, handling things the best we can? Recent events show the people not, please show some control. A citizen asked for clarification, and he replied, did you pursue the ordinance? City manager using staff, building permits, and use permits is going to find vacant homes in Dunsmere, and of course, well-received fortunes of tax revenues from second homeowners, $3,000 a pop. The idea of taxing vacant homes was met with significant resistance by the council. The number of $3,000 that he used was multiple times higher than any number that had been discussed, or, sorry, mentioned in the discussions at council. I corrected Treasurer Rabino, and he stated that he was discussing Berkeley's vacancy tax and was not discussing Dunsmere's numbers, directly contradicting with his previous comment. I came up with it from Berkeley vacancy tax, why, Klarno? That was being discussed between the citizen in the comments and myself, was Berkeley's vacancy tax. What wasn't discussed was any Dunsmere numbers. The citizen Treasurer Rabino was talking to in the comments appeared to believe we were discussing Dunsmere's rates based on their comment of, Dunsmere will only get the $3,000 a pop if the homeowners don't default on the taxes for the second home, we'll see if it works. On the Shasta Retreat Facebook page, the following was posted. Has any of y'all heard about the city of Dunsmere wanting to tax second homeowners additional taxes each year? I found the conversation on Dunsmere Political Forum, maybe just talk, but scary. The following was posted in the comments after the original resident edited the above post to remove the mention of $3,000. They removed the number after I corrected Treasurer Rabino in the comments of the original post. I adjusted the information to reflect the information, the $3,000 was a posted example of what Berkeley did. Either way, the city is talking about this idea, in the end, it still shouldn't happen. For those of you who do not know, I grew up in the Shasta Retreat. This neighborhood is, has between one quarter and one-third of Dunsmere's second homes. I have known many of the people that own cabins in this neighborhood for most of my life. I spent all of my summers tubing with them, playing cards with them, and having barbecue with them. When they saw the city treasurer post that the city was considering taxing them $3,000 a year, this understandably caused them considerable concern and emotional distress. Distress that could have been alleviated if Treasurer Rabino had chosen to share accurate information with members of this community. 218 review. The city currently has several enterprise funds that are running a significant deficit. These include the Solid Waste Fund and the Sewer Fund. The method for raising rates is commonly referred to as the 218 process. Towards the end of last year, Treasurer Rabino suggested that we do a review of previous 218s as a reference for going through the process moving forward. I thought this was a good idea, as there had been issues with previous 218s that led to problems that we are still dealing with to this day. The city finance director added this 218 review to the consideration of future agenda items section of the agenda for January 22 Finance Committee meeting, as 218 analysis, solid waste, and sewer. It was not listed as an item in the 25 meeting. The committee asked that it be re-added to the future agenda items. The item was then re-added to the consideration of future agenda items section for the 226 meeting as 218. On 224, Treasurer Rabino posted a picture of the agenda along with the following caption to Facebook. I told you, here it comes. The nondescript of 218 refers to discussions on your garbage bill increase. 218 is the name now used for the process that came of Prop. 218, Right to Vote on Taxes Act. Obviously, the city did feel it necessary to explain it in the agenda. I mean, we, they are working for us, we trust, right? If it was me, I was on council and said as chairman, I wouldn't have done. That is going against the intention of the Brown Act and 218 process. I would remove it from the agenda, and as for it to be published with better explanation, it is a serious breach of citizens' right to know. At the 226 Finance Committee meeting, Treasurer Rabino commented about how unethical it would, or it was, to have an item with a vague title like 218 on business items. He was informed that he had misread the agenda, and 218 was in fact in the consideration of future agenda items section. He seemed to be quite embarrassed upon realizing this mistake. To add this item to the agenda and then state, if it were me, I, I was on council and said as chairman, I wouldn't have done that. This is going against the intention of the Brown Act, and the 218 process demonstrates either unethical behavior or an unacceptable lack of understanding of the agenda. He also, to this day, has never corrected the Facebook post. On 224 of this year, Treasurer Rabino posted to Facebook, the county has yet to set up a green race recycling program. Council says we must have a 19% increase for a couple of years, so 19% first year, then year after, on top of that, 19%, another, ridiculously high. They blame California, but the law says, some jurisdictions will allow residents to self-haul organic waste. If this is the case, the jurisdiction will provide information about our requirements, or about the requirements for self-hauling. This was a gross misstatement of the facts that Treasurer Rabino knew well. As pointed out earlier, the city has done 218s in the past that were flawed, and we are currently paying for these mistakes. The Solid Waste Fund had significant reserves built up, and it was decided to lower the rates to bring the reserves to a lower level. Once these reserves were brought down, the rates were not corrected. Due to this, the Solid Waste Fund is currently losing $7,000 a week and is over $300,000 in the hole. The state is not to blame for this initial rate change, prior city decisions are. Treasurer Rabino predicted all of this in a post on 3/26/2016. Surplus? Nowhere in the annual audit will you find a category or line item for surplus. Leslie and the newspapers continue to control the conversation by using these misstatements, so council in a lawsuit unable to speak, and staff refrain from comment, it seems as though it all must be true. Well, I'm no 218 judge, but I have a reasonable understanding of municipal enterprise accounting. So I'm going to explain how it is this city that we have a reserve in solid waste, and what options council has taken, what will the future be? First of all, solid waste pays for and includes street sweeping, storm debris cleanup, and the M, any maintenance of the mini garbage cans in the commercial district. Extra street sweeping on Main Street, hence the surcharge on business, and finally pays for cleanup days when we provide a way for citizens to clear and finally pays for cleanup days when we provide a way for citizens to clear their yards of debris collected over the year. Solid waste was in the red the last two years due to equipment replacement charges. But if you don't include equipment replacement, total revenues that have been trending down, expense and expenses have trended up to now this year they will meet. That means the solid waste is losing money. It is projected to lose money into the future. It is below a thousand paying customers. No substantial opportunity in the foreseeable future for against or for gains in revenue. So where did all the money come from? Every year, the auditor accesses the city's depreciation of assets by law. This is vehicles, buildings, equipment, et cetera. They do this because council and staff need to know all this assets will need to be replaced or repaired in the future. At the end of the year, city council should set aside funds for vehicle replacement. Building funds, this money comes from each enterprise's retained earnings. Retained earnings is the amount of money collected in fees minus the cost of service. The city of Dunsborough doesn't. Instead of being tied to set amounts, we allow accumulations in our funds. If you added up all the depreciation over the years, the city had on its audits, the reserves would be gone. The city of Dunsborough has always used its reserve funds to replace equipment as necessary. Much of the city's equipment is portioned out to several enterprises, including general fund each paying a share. In creating a rate structure, the best guess is taken at the time of which factors will cause the amount to be raised or lowered. Usually the fund is in the red at the beginning and hence the need for a rate hike. And because of this, it requires a cash infusion to balance the books as our enterprise fund was when they changed the rate and included mandatory garbage. It was supposed to make more money at the beginning and lose money towards the end of its cycle. It is true tipping fees were not as significant as projected, but costs as well costs as with all government business, the revenues declined as costs mounted expensive. When the reserve is gone, we will need a rate hike, end quote. The reserves running out this time coincided with a massive increase in tipping costs due to pandemic-related inflation and mismanagement at the Blackbeet transfer station, leading to a perfect storm that must be dealt with immediately to keep the fund solvent. Treasurer Rabinho is correct that there is there that there are state mandates coming for organic waste, but these do not take effect until two thousand and twenty-six. And in the past, we have been able to get a waiver to avoid the mandate. If we can't secure the waiver, then we will not have to increase rates as severely as forecasted by the proposed two eighteen. I'm a firm believer in hoping for the best, but planning for the worst. I know I speak for myself and I believe I speak for the rest of the council in saying that we do not blame the state for the current crisis. However, if we are not able to get another waiver before two thousand and twenty-six and we do not go through the two eighteen process, the state may very well be responsible for the next crisis. While discussing the solid waste two eighteen, Treasurer Rabinho suggested that we move street sweeping from the solid waste enterprise fund to the city's general fund. I refer to an exchange in two thousand and sixteen between Treasurer Rabinho and Citizen Marlot, who ran against Treasurer Rabinho in two thousand and twenty. This exchange, the exchange occurred because former Vice Mayor Leslie Wild had sued the city over the solid waste rates and was pushing to move street sweeping into the general fund, just as Treasurer Rabinho now proposes. Dina. The largest city in the county, Huayica, does not charge its residents for garbage services. Neither does Montague, Fort Jones or Edmond. If residents in those cities want to utilize curbside garbage service, they must call the local garbage company and arrange and pay for service. Yet those same cities' public work departments sweep the streets and empty public garbage receptacles from the city's streets. How do they pay for it? Out of the general fund, which is what Dunsborough should be doing? This is exactly why the citizens of Dunsborough have asked for an independent audit of the solid waste enterprise fund. Because garbage fees are governed by Prop two eighteen, which mandates that the property-related fees, like our current mandatory garbage fees, must only be used to pay for the services they were collected for, which is curbside garbage pickup and disposal at the transfer station. If the city of Dunsborough is charging any street sweeper hours or cost to the solid waste enterprise fund, instead of the general fund, they are violating California Constitution Article X I I I D. I just want to make a little note here that this is no longer the case and street sweeping can be in the solid waste one. Mario. Or sorry, Treasurer Rabinho. Everything still costs. Shift it around all you want, you still pay. Dunsborough's general fund can't hardly pay for the curbs and the street repairs. Sure, pay for it out of the general fund and force council to increase other taxes to stay solvent. Huayica recently had an assessment for storm drainage, has high water fees, why not move this to Nirvana? While I believe that everyone has the right to change their opinion with new information, I have to question whether his beliefs are based on facts or who is proposing streets sweeping belongs in one fund or the other. If the latter is the case, I believe this may be the start of return of factionalism like we had in two thousand and sixteen and before. Treasurer Rabinho came to me with a concern about the two eighteen for solid waste that council will be looking at August first. He believed that the numbers were not correct and brought this concern to the Finance Committee. The two of us reviewed the numbers with the Finance Director and the firm preparing the two eighteen. Treasurer Rabinho's concerns were correct, and there were several errors that caused the percentages, the percentage increase to go up considerably. After this, Treasurer Rabinho has stated things such as, who you vote for this November is how high your city bills will soar. Throughout all of his discourse on the issue, he conveniently leaves out the fact that it was his input that led to the numbers being as high as they currently are. He continuously criticizes the numbers that he himself helped set in the current two eighteen, which we'll be looking at in the August first meeting. For my part in correcting the errors in the two eighteen, I am more than willing to explain why these numbers are so high and the reasons that they are as high as they are. I find causing the numbers to be extremely high than blaming others to be disingenuous and misleading. Treasurer Rabinho should take responsibility for his work and be honest with the citizens that his diligence is part of the reason solid race, waste rates may increase. All of this is compounded by the fact that for months before discussing and voting on solid waste two eighteen in Finance Committee, Treasurer Rabinho made several posts on this topic, and yet he chose not to recuse himself like he had after doing the same when discussing S E, S C E D C. Misstating the intent of the city. On six-twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four, Treasurer Rabinho posted to Facebook, Dustin Reef, please support Umatutzi's Cafe, it is the wish of the council and the city of Dunsborough. He then commented on the post, they, the city, are trying to close down the store, why are they, why they are just so righteous? This was a relatively minor issue that did not reach the level of city are trying to close down the store. The fire chief has been and is currently working with the property owner and business owner to address the issues. Mistreatment of staff. I have witnessed Treasurer Rabinho exhibit behavior towards staff that could be considered bullying. Most of this is directed at city, at the city finance director. These often take the forms of demeaning comments or backhanded compliment, or demeaning comments or backhanded compliments. I'm not the only one who has witnessed this behavior. A newly hired staff member was in the office when Mario came in to talk to Finance Director Michelson. After their interaction, this staff member reportedly said to Finance Director Michelson something along the lines of, you are a very patient man. If someone talked to me like that, I'd knock him out. If a Finance Committee meeting ends at the same time as staff gets off work, they will wait in the office until Treasurer Rabinho leaves. The most recent example of how staff feels about Treasurer Rabinho is the following incident on six-twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Treasurer Rabinho sent a series of emails to the Administrative Assistant and Deputy City Clerk along with the following email with the subject line of, I will send you the request for information you asked for. It would help to know more specifics of what is wanted and how I am to produce them. This happened last time, it's happening now. I need information or how to, from the attorney or I will just send what I have and you can compile it for the respondent. This is so lame, have John Kenny call. She forwarded the email to her supervisor along with the following email. Remind this guy he does not give me orders. I'm not his employee, he may call John if he likes himself. There are two issues with this interaction. Have John and Kenny call could be considered giving instructions to staff, which should be requested through the city manager for state law. This is something that Treasurer Rabinho has warned me personally of in the past. This email may be a response to a public records request. However, none of the emails submitted in this interaction appear to be relevant record, relevant to the records request. If this is a response to the public records request, it is very concerning. If not, flooding staff with emails is inappropriate. Oh, and the reason I said that is there were, I believe, ten emails sent in eight minutes. Alright. Um, I'm just going to take a brief break from my quote before I continue any further to address one other point. As Dustin said, he forwarded an email from Mr. Juarez today, and I just wanted to address that email before I read what I have written in my statement. And that is that if you do want to meet, I'm more than happy to meet with you, hear what you have to say. That being said, I, I am looking for action. So if, um, if you do want to meet, my email address is on the city website, feel free to reach out, I am happy to meet with you. Treasurer Rabinho often quotes Peter Arth and saying sunlight is the best disinfectant. In that spirit, I do feel that one of these emails needs to be addressed. This is a communication between Treasurer Rabinho and Mark Juarez, the owner of the California Theater, the Dunsborough Hotel and the Castle Rock Inn. I was recently told by someone that they believed Mr. Juarez had turned a corner and will be working on the theater soon. If this is the case, I am eager to talk with him, see designs, plans and funding start coming out soon. I do however have my concerns as about Mr. Juarez's intentions, given that the email between Treasurer Rabinho and Mr. Juarez contained political gossip surrounding the business website of a member of staff's wife. I believe the public deserves to know exactly what the relationship is between Treasurer Rabinho and Mr. Juarez. Transient occupancy tax. On seven-eight, two thousand and twenty-four, while discussing putting a transient occupancy tax on the ballot in November, Treasurer Rabinho told the Finance Committee that he had information that the current T O T tax the city has may or may not be compliant. He told the committee that he had been given this information by numerous individuals with the implication that he had known for some time, thus failing to timely inform staff and council of information that may impact city finances. The following is an excerpt of Facebook Treasurer. The following is an excerpt from a Facebook post Treasurer Rabinho posted on the subject. I had a nasty argument with Blake and the city manager about our old T O T tax pass, I believe, before two eighteen took effect. My request was please do due diligence and pass the old ordinance to the city attorney to see if still viable before council proposed an increase. City manager and myself had discourse, he somehow thought I was inferring it had to go under a two eighteen process. They tried to dismiss my request by conflating it. I told him I'm not an attorney and neither is he. The spat was broken up by Chair Matthew, but there, but here you go. I'm not going to read the next couple paragraphs as it is about three of the same expert excerpt copied over again. If anyone does want to look at it, I will be posting this entire statement online. Um, and the excerpt is from the Understanding two eighteen website. Since that time, many, that's still the quote. The way Treasurer Rabinho worded his statement in Finance Committee did lead members of the committee being confused about what he, about if he was referring to the two eighteen utility process. This post leaves out that once that confusion was cleared up, the discourse with the city manager also resolved around how long Treasurer Rabinho knew this information, who he learned it from and why it had not been brought to staff or council's attention prior to this point. It is also an excellent example of how information coming from Treasurer Rabinho can be unclear. On seven-eleven, two thousand and twenty-four, while discussing the seven-eight, two thousand and twenty-four meeting on Facebook Messenger, I told Treasurer Rabinho, you had implied that we had to go through the two eighteen process for fees or two, or you had implied that we had to go through the two eighteen process, which implied it was similar to fees, which is significantly different, which caused significant confusion. I then posted an excerpt from the two eighteen fee process followed by, while Prop two eighteen does govern taxes, assessments and fees, they are a very different process. Treasurer Rabinho then replied, I did not, I implied they follow the two eighteen, you guys weren't listening. That's why I motioned due diligence. This is exactly classic way of avoiding work by staff. No matter what I achieved, my goal and now, when they refuse to do one more thing, counselor motion, I will simply cancel my support because they will not do their work of the people. I find this concerning as Treasurer Rabinho in Finance Committee supported raising the T O T by two percent. If the investigation by city staff and the city attorney does turn up any issue, the best way to follow two eighteen is to pass a new T O T. I find it extremely concerning that Treasurer Rabinho would withhold information that could threaten the city's finances from staff and council for years and then threaten to cancel his support for the best remedy for any issues if he is correct. Especially if it could be over something unconnected to T O T as his message seemed to imply to me. I do not appreciate anyone threatening the finances or threatening city finances, especially the treasurer. As mayor, current Finance Committee member and former committee chair, I can assure you that steps have begun to ensure that due diligence is being done. And part of this due, as part of this due diligence, I would like to know why Treasurer Rabinho kept this information to himself for years. Community Resource Center. On seven-twelve, twenty-four, Treasurer Rabinho posted to Facebook. Took almost four years of concentrated effort to get a roof on the library, the city doesn't need another old building. He also posted the following comments, which I will address individually. A city official and city council member met with Mr. Arth to consider options on buying a building in the commercial district that seems to need a roof. No city official, end quote. No city official was present for the alleged meeting. Quote, what is scary, the realtor for Mr. Arth is a council member, here hoping that he wasn't there, part of the process and all of them following the California fair practices. It is true that Vice Mayor Brian is the real estate agent of Mr. Arth. As Council Member Lucchese is currently working on helping the Community Resource Center get a grant to purchase the building themselves. This is something which does not need to involve a real estate agent unless it starts to move forward. California law prohibits Vice Mayor Brian from making any money off transactions involving the government of the city of Dunsborough, even if he was to be involved in the transaction. Quote, Arth's building is the understanding. He was at the meet. Hopefully, the city will agenda and discuss this soon and we can clear up the facts before any commitments. It is pretty uncomfortable when council goes behind the back of citizens. Council has been the power of this, or council has the power of the civic pulpit, control of staff and city professionals, why not discuss before action? I, or end quote, I completely agree. And I believe that every other member of the council agrees as well. I resent the implication that Treasurer Rabinho is making. If Council Member Lucchese is unable to secure a grant or another source of funding for the Community Resource Center and chooses to bring this item before the city, it will be on the agenda and discussed by this council. In the meantime, I do applaud her for helping an organization that does so much for this community. Conclusion. Treasurer Rabinho recently posted to Facebook, oh my, I asked for more specific agenda items. I talked to Michael and Matthew, just can't get them to follow the law or have transparency with the citizens. At last meeting, they talked about raising T O T. For this meeting, they included supportive data for T O T. Why didn't they put that in the agenda title? Because they don't care, they have decided we don't matter. Treasurer Rabinho is correct that the agenda item should have been better titled. Treasurer Rabinho, Vice Mayor Brian and myself have asked staff to get us better Finance Committee agendas. The three of us all agree on this issue and staff must do better. With everything that has been laid out tonight, I find Treasurer Rabinho insinuating that Vice Mayor Brian and myself not following the law or being transparent to be the epitome of hypocrisy. Personally, I can also think of no better way to demonstrate to the citizens that you don't care about them or that they don't matter, matter than to mislead them repeatedly. He has stated that there are conspiracy theories going around town and that we should go talk to people to find out the truth. Usually when I do do this, these conspiracy theories trace back to statements made by Treasurer Rabinho. The circle of misinformation must be broken. As a citizen of this community who voted for Treasurer Rabinho in the past, I have been extremely disappointed in his conduct since I joined council. This kind of behavior is not what I want out of someone I voted for. As a voter, I apologize to the community for my part in enabling this situation and as elected official that has been voted in by the members of this community, I apologize for not taking more action before it reached this point. Fourteen years ago, Mario Rabinho sat on this council. He and the other members of that council made some hard choices on infrastructure improvements, utility rates and suggested some policies that were ahead of their time. Members of the community pushed back and Vice Mayor Rabinho, along with several other members of council were recalled. Though I was not involved in town politics as I am now, I felt at the time that some people used inaccurate information and fear mongering in the recall campaign of Vice Mayor Rabinho. I worry that he learned the wrong lesson from his recall. While it is unfortunate that those tactics worked then, I have always found that the members of this community respond best to honesty and reason, not manipulative tactics. As mayor, I formally asked the council to censure Treasurer Rabinho and I asked Treasurer Rabinho to be honest and trust the people of this community, they may surprise him. and I asked Treasurer Urbino to be honest and trust the people of this community. They may surprise him. All right, with that, if any other councillors have statements or questions on my statement, I am happy to. All right, with that, we will move on to any rebuttal Treasurer Urbino would feel like. All right, and. Yes, it is your opportunity to rebut, since I'm the only one who's made a statement. Have as much time as you would like to address my statement or to ask questions of it.
We're gonna discuss a few things. Okay. First, I take a little repulsion at the fact that you use this to explain the two eighteen process. There is actually no difference between what I was saying to Leslie and Deena at the time and what was being said in my post. My post don't say treasurer. My post say Mario Urbino. It's a small town. I do wear two hats. I realize that. But I don't report to people that I'm treasurer of the city and in those posts. Let's just get to the two eighteen. The problem with the two eighteen is the work was done. We came to Finance Committee as this Mike exactly. We would look at the efficacy of the two eighteen, okay? The problem was, it was obvious in this two eighteen that it was done extremely poorly. And we again tried to go through and make real numbers. And the question is, why Mario? It's because, and why did you even bring up the last time we did a two eighteen and totally missed on a mistake that quite a few people, including myself, should have caught? So the real issue is not only communication. The real issue for me is this closed minded staff nightmare that we're living in. And when you're talking about me, you're talking about an issue of communication. So we're gonna start with Mr. Reeve. Mr. Reeve, I talk to everybody in town. I would even talk to you. But you killed that and you don't put any effort into it. You hide back in a room and we both know you do it. So your wife attacked me. Your wife attacked me first. My answer was, I don't care what she posts. You don't have to take it down. But the post people decided they would go ahead and take it down. But I don't attack your wife and I don't attack staff because they have extremely difficult job. And one of the problems we're having here with this two eighteen discussion tonight is staff has a view for specific financial regions. In that time, the people that had the money were the people and we needed to do an increase. That in two eighteen increase done by Randy Johnson, done by Case Engineering, said that we would run out of money. That was information that was before you were on council. Some of you are on council. We always knew nothing happened. When you guys set up this financial thing, I started ringing up. Me and Blake would look at it. I said, we're not getting the revenues projected in the two eighteen. We need to follow our two eighteens and project it. What you guys don't seem to gather is this isn't coming recently. This has been coming for years. I tried to get your attention. I tried to get your attention several times on Finance Committee about the fact that solid waste had a sewer rate, sorry. The sewer rate had an issue with income. You guys had to pass a two eighteen to fix that. But you did it years after we started noticing it and it took forever to get done. It was something that should have financially been done for the benefit of the citizens. I'm gonna have to grab water.
Do you like to just do a recess?
No, I'm just grabbing water.
There's a.
Mr. Reeve, my entire family was in the military, except for three of us. We're seven. My nephew died. He lived in Mount Shafet. He died. And with Dave's work and the sheriff's work, they did some nice things for that nephew of mine. He died in Afghanistan.
Sorry to hear that.
Mr. Reeve, I got cancer. I got cancer and I have no control of both of my sphincters. I wear appliances. I don't wear this to look like I'm from Nebraska. I wear this to hide those appliances. And they're not particularly good appliances. A lot of times I catch myself smelling like poop and I gotta run home. We had a little bit of a meeting, you and me, when you first got high. We had a couple email exchanges because we'd gone more than four months without having a finance meeting. And it was time. You took offense to me saying that. So I spent the next month and a half trying to get an appointment from you when you said you were too busy and you were upset about the South Second Sewer District, which was long before me. And several financial managers and managers looked at it and said there wasn't anything worth doing. Okay. So I finally did get that appointment from you. I got dressed up in regular clothes, which don't fit very well anymore, and I came in to talk to you. I had some or one of my appliance appliances sticking out and you took exception to that. And I don't know why. But the truth is, I was given an extension on life. I had to fight for it, but I was given the extension on life. And Mr. Chesey, I've already done what I need to do for this world. I am only here working for the citizens of Dunsmere to get the city turned back into a community and to stop having all my friends and my business friends be attacked. I understand what you're doing. I signed your request to run for council. My relationship with Mr. Mark Juarez is not as good as my relationship with you. I've spent times when I can find it talking to you. I've told you several times, I really wanted more out of it. Well, this comes into the conversation. Counsel, thank you. It is a pleasure to know that it's you personally that choose to censure. I'm very proud of that. Before your installment of my feelings, my, of my feelings and tirades against you, I hope personally by you, I want to note a few particulars. One of the requirements for treasurer in the city of Dunsmere is running for office. My stipend is fifty dollars a month. I'm not bonded by the city's insurance. Second one is where the city manager is responsible for creating and executing the city budget. It is his budget. He makes hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or so. He is bonded by the city's insurance. The financial manager is the manager of the city finances and is paid almost eighty thousand dollars a year. Not that I don't think he should be paid more. A year and he is bonded by city insurance. Three is yet there's another unpaid staff member in charge of the council receivables. City council and only city council approves the budget and the accounting procedures of the city. City treasurer has no authority over any staff member or employee or council member. No final approval or disapproval of budget or audit. On the Finance Committee, we can recommend as well as any two citizens that are also on that Finance Committee. So two questions remain. Who is responsible and what does, what does the treasurer do? I feel that historically, the city treasurer is to be aware of city practices and spending, to assure funds remain in account and to pay city bills, city loan payments and enough money in the account to afford city bills and city loan payments, and oversee budgets and audits, to answer questions as how the money is spent in the city. I feel that I am the citizen's answers. I have always in the past had at least once a month meetings with previous city managers, biweekly meetings with the finance manager to catch up the city finances at City Hall. I have signed most of the checks and looked over invoices. Three things have blocked my ability. Years ago, when Matthew came on, this council formed a committee, a finance committee with goals and agendas managed by council, with reports back to council with, okay, and with reports back to council and with no vote, okay. This count, this finance council reports back to council and it does so with no vote accounting because votes are rarely taken. Council participants is mainly only discussion to council. So when council comes here and tells you what was discussed at Finance Committee, it wasn't voted on by Finance Committee. It was what's put together by the two seated councilmen. One of the things that bothers me the most is report to council is never voted on. I've been here and heard reports from the Finance Committee and they're just not what happened, but it's okay. During finance meetings, councillors don't do the work on budgets and audits as we have done in the past. In the past, it was council member, city manager, financial manager, and the treasurer, and we would go over line by line. We weren't doing these community promotions. We weren't doing a lot of different things. But it was at that time, we discussed the budget. The city manager would explain his thinking and what he was doing and where the city was financially. So we don't work on audits and budgets as we have in the past. And you guys know, we hardly get past revenues anymore. It just is awful. In fact, I spend a lot of time going back over them and I'm often upset that we don't spend the time talking on it. But the oddest thing is, I can't remember when Finance Committee did it without me being there, I guess, actually voted to have the budget proceed to council. And it could be that I was sick or traveling for things, but I just don't see it. Council does not meet to do the intensive budget and audits. We have been asked to pass an audit without inspection because of timelines. And we also have been, since Mr. Reeve has been, we had very few in one year finance moves. City manager from day one till today has been hostile and refused to meet me. He made disgusting looks at my coverings that hide my cancer appliances. He reached into my interpersonal space to grab a tool that belonged to me out without asking. He threatened me because an employee complained of my rudeness, but never ever asked my side of how rude the employee was to me. He is the only city manager in twenty years to have this attitude. He is a bad city manager. I have come in front of you and called this manager a liar at a council meeting. Now there are many voices of citizens and businessmen that claim the same to this staff council. The man lies. My joy comes in this moment, knowing councillors responsible and will have to answer for the last four years or more. And I have the facts and numbers in my hand. And while I watched the city's brand new excavator rust out the sewer pond and wonder why it wasn't used in the latest installment of repairs on city lines. And I wonder why our new Public Works Director needs to spend an hour at council and needs to spend an hour at finance meeting. Why? Well, I know I want to bring that one up. Snow removal is another one, closing down the district. I laugh as you prop up this public worker works. Staff sergeant that may think of himself as a warrant officer or an officer in charge, but he's basically a public works city manager. So many times I have said this to you, and this is my frustration. And so I'm gonna get to apologize to you like I did apologize to you about the agenda item. That shouldn't have been there. And then the other one that just, as you're using hearsay, saying I said something. That's hearsay, Michael. It wasn't true and you're not purporting it the way I said it. It's okay. It's hearsay. Should have been struck. I don't care. So many times, as I've said it, the average income in the city is twenty four thousand dollars a person. Twenty four thousand dollars a person. The household is forty two thousand dollars. Citizens cannot afford the payroll of the city. The citizens cut their expenses to live with the cost of living inflation taxing us today. That's what the citizens have done. The city has only increased its expenses while receiving greater returns from the taxes the citizens suffer under. I know this is hard to understand. But city finances are city finances. The public citizens, their finances are their finances. When you do rate hikes, when you do taxes, you have to consider the citizens in the picture. There has to be a discussion. Sure, we need to do a solid waste rate hike. Sure, that's absolutely true. But you're talking a citizenry that can't afford it and a state that has an unfunded mandate. And you should be able to sit down and also have and speak to the solid waste cost to citizens making twenty four grand a year. You got it. You gotta understand that. The arguments between you and me, Blake, are the arguments of do you understand what people are going through? So what's the big issue here? This has been going on a long time. It's communication. And I'm sorry, Mr. Reeve, if communicating is not what you like doing. And I know that you don't communicate because I have citizenry here, members of the business district you have never met. City managers don't do that. They go meet the people that pay the bills. They talk. They talk to the people that pay the bills. They find ways to resolve issues, not create issues. In Dunsmere, putting in a fence, which my neighbor and me had talked about, and my neighbor just put a new fence behind him. His next door neighbor came over, they talked about it, the next door neighbor gave him a wad of cash, they put in the fence. Neighbors resolve problems. City Managers resolve problems. When I don't see problems get resolved, what you hate the most about me is I'm going to get in the middle of it and mix it up. I want these problems resolved. This is my town. These are my friends. These are people you're hurting very much. And yeah, that business district looks like hell. It's never looked that bad. They just survived COVID. We lost a bunch of businesses and the business district wasn't that good to start with. But what you don't understand is these are good people and just because Mr. Arth wants it to look good. You've got to work with the people that are here and making good happen. This is the issue. You say, Mario, you're putting all this stuff on Facebook. There is no paper. I don't know how many times I gotta tell you. There's no paper. There's no way you go and do an editorial. There is no way you call in a legitimate real estate agent so errors don't happen. But in our newspapers in the past, this is Dunsmere, California, newspapers made errors all the time. I am not perfect. Not even close. Mario doesn't even try to be perfect. What Mario wants to know is how are you treating my friends and my family? How are you treating my town? I have been pushing Michael's buttons because something like this had to happen. I have been pushing Matthew that something like this had to happen. We got to have a town that has a community. This council can't seek a solid waste committee. The members have been gone forever. I just talked to Michael. He doesn't think he's on it. He's been off it forever. There is another member. You're the other member. When's the next meeting? Okay, let's just go to planning. What happened to planning? This council won't even trust planning to be able to pass the colors. That is planning's job. Then it comes to you guys and you say, okay, we like it, go. That's how planning's supposed to work. All of us in the city know that. It's not happening. I love our city staff. But I've got the most stupidest request for information. I asked the city attorney, what should I do? He said, I should submit it. I said, what if it's this? He goes, well, we can ask for clarification. I get requests. I said, I said, I could do it. But for my freedom of information, I have no way to know how to pull off an email and put it in a list to send out. All I know is two things. I don't have access to my city attorney when I should. And I was told by city attorney, it doesn't matter, just send her everything. And I'm willing to do that because I don't spend my time saying how you're such a terrible guy like the D-David. I'm not interested. I'm picking on you. If I was, if I thought there was something there, I would have worked with you. I've worked with every city manager. I love people. Now I'm dead in a couple of years. I'm going to be off of being Treasurer in a few short months. And I'm telling you, it could get worse. I am going to put this recall in, not because I hate Mr. Lucheschi. I need this town to turn around and start heading in the right direction. It took me less than two days to get signatures. I'm afraid how fast it's going to get. And it's embarrassing. Me and Mr. Arth sat there and passed a resolution on our recall. And you guys are going to get to do it and it's all going to be public. And the council will be public. And I don't think the city of Dunsmere needs that. And I hated. I was recalled. I didn't like it. I hadn't made my decisions about it. But sometimes you got to shuffle the data. And right now, there's three things I know. The giant silo in the room is right here. The giant floor knock is across the street. Citizens don't even like going in there anymore. All we hear is how you have to protect yourselves from us. When I had my conversation with someone in there. I was still recovering from cancer. I could barely stand up. I was talking like this. I had a very good issue and I do, I talk real loud because guess what happens when they shoot you with radiation? And fill you with steam. I, in my entire life, have never hit another person. I have never, I have total respect for that staff person. I think, and I know, any good city manager would have said something. And we would have worked it out because I still respect that lady and I still honor people working on this council. Because I know how empty and frustrating the job is. I still do. But man, resolve problems, work through issues. This, this isn't a Sergeant Major situation. These are people. This is a community. We all need to be led and work together. I understand you don't like what I said. I felt completely pushed to do it. So far, pushed to do it that I spent many, many sleepless nights trying to figure out what I was going to do about this council and how to bring this town into the future before I expire. And guess what? When you get the cancer I have, it's coming back. They test me every four months and every four months I go through, what if I get the news? It's just amazing experience in life. I could go through my statements. I understand from your point of view, you didn't find they helped the staff or the city of Dunsmere financially. What you didn't understand was it's not just about them. You're representative. You don't just represent the business of the city. You're a guardian of the business of the city. But you're here representing the people of this town. And I want to know that these people have a say in what's going on. I want to know that you guys are caring. When you do things right, they started to cut down the trees, they became that issue, simple resolve. I had to jump in the middle of it and then resolve happened. I didn't even go to any of it. It just happened. All I need is for you guys to respond. All I need is for you guys to communicate. All I need is not to get millimouth answers when we know the real truth is, no. The city has better revenues than the citizens. And quite frankly, if we want to pass a rate hike and then be able to turn around and pass one when we get the county to do its greenways and the county to do its recycling, then we should stare at this. $40,000 kicking out of one employee.
Good.
Figure out how to fix this.
No, you keep yours on, Mario.
I, I guess I have a special relation to Mark whereas there was problems on Sacramento Avenue. But I've known Mark since he came into this town. I know everything about Mark that I need to know. Mark's Mark. I've had a relationship and I told you, and I told you, if there's something you need to talk to Mark about. I do have his phone number and he does respond to me. Because Mark doesn't necessarily respond all that well. For some reason, a couple of years ago, he started to start responding to me. I know Mr. Arth. I know a lot of these people in town. I spent hours with Mr. Allen trying to console him and counsel him about the city of Dunsmere. Mr. Allen and me probably still communicate. I don't know. I try to. I still try to communicate with everybody here. I love Dennis. Dennis took me to our city spring. Dennis has been genuine and kind to me forever. He's a good man. But Dennis's job was not the job that it was supposed to be. You did it. Your council's supposed to know about what that job's supposed to be. We're supposed to have a great operator down at that sewer plant and not be paying pace engineering for their engineering. And Mr. Arth had complained ferociously about that for years. So someone here has to know about what I'm talking about. We even passed some kind of an increase just to placate and get that position of public works creator. Past city managers know. Maybe you should. And this goes to, why doesn't Mario tell us about this important TOT thing? It was general knowledge in the office. This city has no memory. The memory is this long. That's why I offer, and I don't want to offer specifics because I've been told by past city managers, I don't know the truth. I've been told by Dave Edmondson that it never passed, that there's no record of it. And he did the research. He did the research when he had a 218 brought against him. Not a 218, a fair practice brought against him. So I know, cursor it. The part is, I have asked previous staff. Is there a official vote? Did it pass? What was in the vote? Nobody can find it. So no, I can't tell you that I'm right. I can't tell you that I'm wrong. All I can tell you is, we need to do due diligence. And yes, at a meeting, I could have been misunderstood. I said 218, which was pass the citizens' right to pay, vote on taxes. And you know it. But they were talking 218 and I couldn't get them to stop. And Blake challenged me, out and out challenged me with, are you asking me to do, see if there's a 218 process for this? And I just wanted it stopped. And we'd stopped it. So it's going to be a decision in this town for the hearts of the people. I don't care if I lose. I do care if I educate them. And I do hope people in this town come to respect the type of people they need to have on council, that they listen to them. That they go out and are part of the committee so they can fill. I mean, you guys started by doing a thing with Mr. Arth where you did the water bill and you did a tally. And it took forever. You had 100 people, you had to compile data for 100 people. I mean, it's all right. We got 900 voters. We need a lot of people to show up these meetings, a lot more than 100. And this council's been sitting here empty until I opened my mouth and caused all this trouble for you. I hope it's good trouble. I actually like you guys. This town means a lot to me. When I was dying of cancer, this town gave me $16,000 to make it easier. That was right there. That was Big Dave doing. I appreciate it. That was a lot of people in this town's doing. I owe, I owe them big time. I know you don't like hyperbole. Then you should listen to the small stuff. We should have conversations that don't just include what city managers are saying. And I'm going to tell you something. It was a lot easier working with Mario when he knows what's going on. It's not easy when Mario's getting millimouth answers and getting half truths. It doesn't work. Communication with the citizens is important. Communications and citizens should come from council. The Treasurer is supposed to be in the background. You forced me out. I know you're censoring me. It couldn't be by a better group. And quite frankly, if I had to take you to task on all this stuff, you wouldn't be so smug as you are. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. All right. With that, um, do you have any questions? Now we'll move on to the rule.
Through the chair, I do, I do have two questions for Treasurer Ruby now, please. Um, first off, I did have three, but you kind of answered my first one, which is, I, I want to understand what you're trying to achieve with this type of behavior. And I, I think I kind of understand that now. Um, from your position, do you believe that the actions that you're
Yeah, I am deaf and I didn't really talk.
Yeah. So, uh, do you believe that the actions that you're taking are the best way to meet the goal that you're trying to achieve?
Okay, the worst way, I just have a council won't listen.
Okay. And so you, you chose those because you felt like you weren't being listened to?
No, not just me, all the people around me. I'm gone, girl. I'm off the planet. I don't care what's for me. I care what's for my friends and family in this town.
Okay. Uh, you're the only one up here, so that's why I'm directing the questions at you. If I, if I were to, if I were to post on social media that quote, the city council and Treasurer agree with one of my personal opinions about something that has not been voted on, how do you feel I should be treated?
That would be an issue. That's why this town needs some kind of a bill. Okay, so the way the representative government works, there's also the, what is it, third arm of government? Newspapers and there is the fact that newspaper agents have sat in here and said what's going on. Yeah, for years, you guys haven't had the benefit that. They've removed themselves. So, okay, you guys are finding there's new challenges. There's new challenges. When you post in that stupid newspaper in Mount Shasta, nobody reads it anymore. So you don't get people in here. But the thing is, I come to you, I tell you about it. It's like you guys have got to find new ways to do it. But the latest is, we want to talk about the TOT rate, 2%, 4%. And the way it was purported by an agenda item was, you know, that we agreed to the tax, etc. Okay. And I'll say enough that I agreed to the tax. I didn't agree to 4%. I really didn't even agree to 2%, but I agreed with the city may need the tax, but my definitions are different. So here's the thing, really clear, okay? Mr. Amet sat there in Finance Committee, a meeting before I arrived. And he said, and I'm going to give you guys credit. I mean, I give you credit when it's due. These guys held that subject till I could arrive. They knew I wanted to participate. So he asked that we poll the operators of the hotels. So it comes up in the agenda. We know it's going to be here in discussion tonight. So I go, I go down to Cave Springs. I go down to our brand new hotel. I call the, the guy at the end of the town and I talk to the lady up at Penny's. Okay, no polling was done. No discussion was won. We are siloed. We were given data from Mount Shasta that doesn't really represent Dunsmere. And you kind of would have really benefited if we would have audited the operators of the hotels about this.
So I guess Mr. Treasurer, you know, I'm, I'm just kind of going back So I guess, Mr. Treasurer, you know, I'm, I'm just kind of going back to your behavior. So it's the item tonight is a censure of your behavior. And so I just want to understand again, so going back to a hypothetical of if I were to post some of the things that you have posted, what kind of actions do you think should have been, should be taken against me?
And I said it, first off, I'm not a legislator. I don't pass laws. I don't set policy. Secondly, I'm a citizen of this town. I do have a right and it hasn't been determined that Facebook is considered publishing.
So if I were to post those things, if I were to do.
I wish you would be able to. I wish that we could have a conversation like we did in the old days with article from councilmen, article right beside it from the citizens.
Okay.
I wish that was the case. And this becomes the point. You guys got a hard situation. You're from the next generation. You gotta solve it.
So again, we're, we're talking about your behavior.
My behavior in the story that I was telling you, that you didn't want me to finish, I'm just gonna do it real quick. Is that it wasn't done.
I'm done with my question.
But what I did is I asked for emails to be sent to the city and myself.
Mario, the thing that I, I've been listening to everything you've just got done saying, and the thing that really strikes me is not once did you really address what I'm most concerned about. You care about the people. Do you care that they get the right information? Do you care that they don't get some information that's false, that causes them concern and causes them to lose sleep at night? I don't understand how it's not possible for you. I can understand, I know you've had situations with, with Matthew and Juliana, but I don't understand how you could sit and talk with him and he explains that you're wrong and you're not saying, I'm sorry, I gotta correct it as soon as I can. You have a responsibility to make sure that people know what's going on, not just what's on your mind at the moment, because that's what I saw. You just throw stuff out there. I don't understand how you can do that and then say, well, I've got all these reasons. I, I got all these reasons. All I'm saying is, if you're part of the team of the finance committee, why don't you act like a teammate? And when the leader says, this is not true, what you're saying, you're causing people to be concerned about things that don't deserve it. You should be concerned about that because you care about the people. That's what strikes me and I know you do care. I know you do. But the whole point is, what is this idea of using it just to throw stuff out on a regular basis to get people feel that the city isn't doing its work? You know, you talk about the two eighteen. I, I worked on four of them, I think, three or four. And there was a mistake where somebody didn't understand that a database came down, had some differentiation and that caused the problem. But every single time and every person on every one of those, we did not want to spend a penny that the people couldn't afford. But when you understand that things cost money and you add it all up, things have to happen. But to say that the city is doing this or that because they're bad, there was not one time where I saw somebody in a Prop two eighteen and saying, hey, maybe we could increase the money this way. I liked that. We went through the whole process of spreading out the increases over five years because we were concerned. But now to have somebody out here saying the whole city screwed up, two eighteen is bad, they're trying to take your money. When if you sat down and talked to them, it would have been better. That's my feeling. And again, I, I love you as a person, but I can't accept the idea that as a treasurer, you're not willing to work with the team and be responsible about what you say.
You represent the biggest problem there is with this council. You're not a team. You are individuals making individuals decisions. You're not a team, Bruce. That two eighteen that you managed was the same two eighteen that I was on. I'm part responsible for the mistake. The problem I felt with the mistake is that staff hand walked us through the process. And when questions about, let's check the numbers, let's see what this happens. It was, oh, no, no, we gotta, we gotta move on.
And so the best way to solve that then is to go out and say a bunch of stuff?
Well, I don't know. The problem is, I let it go on that time. I'm unwilling to let it go on this time. The problem is, I need you guys to hear. The problem is, when people come in here and they try to talk to you, are you really hearing? I know what she's saying. I know right and wrong is.
Subject to what this is, the subject of this is what you were doing on social media, your statements. That's what this is about.
Do we agree this is not a team effort?
Just gonna jump in here for just one second. This exchange right here is why I want, or is why I originally asked for questions and answers to be directed through the chair. So that way we don't cut each other off. And because it was getting a little heated there. So let's just, I, I'm gonna let you answer that question now, but moving forward, let's direct the questions through the chair. So that way people aren't cutting each other off or things aren't getting as heated.
I apologize.
Bruce, I love you too. And I appreciate what you did. But it's time for this council to take an evaluation. And to me, that evaluation is are they truly representing the citizens of Dunsmere? The thing is, I hate to use hyperbole to get to an answer. I don't always use hyperbole. There's a huge disparity between what Michael thinks I was talking about and what I was talking about. There's a huge disparity between the two eighteen issue with Blake and, and city rate, Mr. Ray. The, the thing is, communication is what's supposed to be really good. Cause your public officials, your bureaucrats, communication is what police and sheriffs have to be really good at. This council needs to step up. The thing is, you have no attendance at most of these meetings. You can't fill your subcommittees and your committees. And when the people come, they feel like they're not heard. Sure, they get you three minutes. But they don't feel heard. I just pull, I would just ask you to pull citizens. Don't even listen to me. I want you to pull citizens and we will be, we'll be pulling citizens when we go through this process of recall. Cause this process of recall is fighting for the hearts of the citizens of Dunsmere. We're talking about a reshuffle. We have to all agree which direction the city goes, not the city manager. All of us as a community, leaders lead. The citizens should follow. And that should happen because they have our interests and our stakes at heart. I know you don't like what I was doing. I can appreciate that. But I can't help that every, everybody's EQ leaders on three. I just can't.
That was my question. I'm done.
I'm done.
You have a question before we move to public comment? All right, with that, I will open this item to public comment.
With that, I will open this up to public comment. Um, same rules as before and treasurer Rabino. If you would like to address any public comment that is made, you will have that opportunity. Um, same rules, three minutes, thirty seconds, or I will give a thirty second warning. Please state your name for the record. If you do choose to state your name and address, I will not start your timer until you're done with your uh, name and address, as long as your name and address isn't in the middle of your statement. Um, please limit your uh, statement to this item. We'll do the people in the room first before we move to Zoom. All right, with that.
Uh, Peter Arth, fifty eight, fifty nine Sacramento Avenue. Uh, of course, I've known council member, former council member Rabino, current treasurer Rabino for a number of years. So we served together on this council as mayor and vice mayor. And for the life of me, I don't know why he chooses to drag me and my two adult children through his personal mud pit. I highly regard Steve Bryant, the executive director of the community center. The community garden belongs to him and his operation. I highly regard council member Luke Casey. She knows how to get grants. She knows how to plan. So after I had my little medical excitement earlier this year, my children and I agreed that I need to dispose of most of my properties in downtown Dunsmere. And because the community garden serves a purpose, because the building next to it that I do own is rented to the resource center, it was my hope that Steve and Juliana could work with me as citizens in the first instance, as professionals in the second instance, to get the community garden and the building into good hands for when I'm gone. So I had one conversation with Juliana. I had one conversation with Steve. The suggestion was, Peter, write a letter of intent to the city. And I did that. I wrote a letter of intent, hard copy electronically. I sent it to Dustin Reeve and I sent it to Steve Bryant. In my view, it's a public document. Have you seen it, Mario? Have any of you seen it? You should see it. It is my intention to sell the community garden and the adjoining building to support what has happened there over the last several years. So Mr. Rabino, as town crime author on Facebook, a city official and a city council member met with Mr. Arth to consider options on buying a building in the commercial district that seems to need a roof.
Thirty seconds.
For those that are hard of reading, uh, what, what have we got here? Uh, took almost four years of concentrated effort to get a roof on the library. The city doesn't need another old building. So number one, the city and I say the meeting never happened. And in, when you come back, tell us the evidence for the meeting you wrote happened. Number two.
Sorry, Peter, it's time's up.
He identified.
I'm gonna hold every one of the, the three minutes on this one, Peter.
The wrong building. I don't own the building he talked about.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, my name is Alex, Shasta Avenue. Um, I think, I, I volunteer at the community garden. Um, I like gardening. It's part of therapy for me. Um, I've been doing gardening since I was nine years old. And so that's why, that's personally why I like to volunteer at that community garden. But when I'm there working uh, in the garden, I see the signs of the businesses that are here in Dunsmere, uh, from people who donate money to that project. Um, I see young kids going to that garden uh, and, and getting classes, learning to garden as young children. Um, I see that community garden as the hub, the center of people working together in Dunsmere. And I've never seen a town where there's so much conflict and cooperation. But I see that community garden with its beautiful waterfall um, as a centerpiece, as a gemstone. And I, I thank you, Peter, for letting the community have that garden. It's, it's, it's magical. It's purely, it's beautiful. Um, and I, I think most people who live in Dunsmere year round recognize the beauty of that garden and how it, it pulls people together. So um, what's my point? I think, I think my point is, is that working together is really important. And we, Mario, Peter, you're facing the endpoint. That's gotta be scary. I think that puts a real significance to what is important to you and what's important to all of us in our lives. City politics is messy. Um, let's just try to work together and, and thank you for, for this great garden and I don't know. Let's, let's try and be a team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Coraz, fifty seven, forty four Dunsmere Avenue. Likewise, I, I kind of wanted to echo the other things that are being said here. Uh, I'm, I'm sad that we can't work all together. And it, it seems almost inappropriate that we spent over an hour, forty five minutes for you explaining the situation of Mario and, and, and he suspended fairly twenty minute, twenty, little over twenty minutes responding half the time. But why can't we all work together? I, Justin, I just wanted to meet with you. But why do you make up stories and say things that are dishonest and just not true about me? And as I've seen it, you do it about others. That, that creates mistrust and disharmony. You're a leader. You're the leader of our town. You've got to be a leader and, and not do things like that. I just want to work together. Juliana, I appreciate the positive comment you said, as you do sometimes too, Bruce. Those are nice comments. Why can't we just work together? Mario was one of the few people that came to me and said, what support, what help do you need to get your properties open? How can we help? How can we collectively work together towards a common goal for everybody? But I don't get that from the council. I really appreciate you offering. That's all I wanted with, with all of you, just to work together. I think everybody, all of the proprietors that I have spoken to have said the same thing. That's what builds a community. This is a magical place. Let's preserve that magic. Likewise, I exactly tomorrow or two days from now, it'll be one year I had a major stroke. I wasn't told I was gonna live. So I can really adapt. Mr. Arth has gone through and it's sounds with, Mario went through is much worse. But it gives you a whole different perspective on life. And really to evaluate what is really important. And we have a magical place. I'm listening to all the things and what I hear.
Sorry, everybody here. Less than thirty seconds.
Thank you. Everybody here really cares and that's magical. But let's guide it in the right direction. Be a leader and help bring people together united.
Separate. Thank you.
Uh, Jake, fifty eight, thirty six Dunsmere Avenue. Um, I'm up and down that street a lot, see a lot of things. Um, I did see Juliana and Peter Arth, and I believe it was Quentin with Stephen Bryant in front of the building. I don't know if they're having a meeting together or if he just, you have a pretty regular active schedule, walking around there. Maybe he was just walking by or whatever. I don't know, but they were all seen together there for sure, you know, in front of the building. I don't know what was discussed. And then, you know, I hear, unfortunately, I hear just about every hearsay you could find under the sun. So uh, in the process of a couple of people talking in the store, um, I did overhear them discussing that the city was actively working to work on get a grant to get the roof put on so that the investors would purchase that building to keep the recreation, recreation uh, department there. What is that called? The resource center in that, in that location. And that's, those are the things that I've heard. One I saw, one I heard. Now, whether or not they had a meeting or not, I couldn't, you know, preview to that. But as far as that, of those two items, there's definitely some validity to it. Um, I, I believe so. That's what I, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Bobby Malanga, five eight, five five Dunsmere Ave. Um, I just want to say that attacking this guy just for saying things about you guys is kind of a joke. Like we're attacking his freedom of speech. Every single thing he said about me or my business is on his website is a hundred percent accurate. Um, the city trying to shut down the breakfast spot. The city trying to shut down the breakfast spot. I mean, to this day, the health department still gets phone calls from city hall. They tell me who calls complaining about me. The fire chief was told for months not to inspect the building because they didn't want to approve my business license. The city didn't. So it is true. Everything he's saying about, about me on there is true. The rumor about the resource center. Someone that works in the resource center actually told me directly that that was the plan, was that the city was going to be finding a grant to either buy the building or to make the building more valuable for purchase. And that was somebody high up in the resource center. So that rumor also seems to be true. But I think it's kind of a joke that we're attacking his professionalism when we have probably the worst city manager that any city's ever had. I mean, this guy lies to everybody about everything. But we're not doing anything about that. I mean, one of the city council members wives, just within the last 24 hours, was acting completely inappropriate online as well. Like these things happen and they're happening, but you're only attacking him because he wants to remove one of you. But it's not him that wants to do it. It's the city. Like you guys think that we're up here and that we're the minority. We're actually the majority. You know, most of you guys I don't see at the breakfast spot. I don't see at the flamingo. I don't see in the hardware store. Most of you guys aren't walking around, buying things from us, hanging out with us, talking to us. The majority of this town is not happy with you. And they will vote and they will start to remove you guys. And we will get this town going and be in a better condition than it is now. We hear, we hear you say a lot of things with it. Cosmot or grants or whatever your goals are, but I haven't seen anything done. We don't see a lot of change and we want to see it. So I think it's a joke that, that we're attacking him for having freedom of speech and then standing up for a lot of the people in the community just because he says things that you don't like.
Thank you. Thank you.
Every second, again, 4128 Dunsmere. I want to say that I don't think any of you really listen to some of us. I've been saying the same thing. I still have not in seven months got any answers to any of my problems with Mark Allen. And the thing is, is that I was at one of the meetings, I can't remember if it was a finance meeting or not, about being discussed about the second tax on homeowners vacation home. I remember that the signal that that was kind of weird. Like if I'm a homeowner and I live in, you know, somewhere, somewhere, and I buy a home here for vacation, you're gonna double tax me because I'm not living there. I got up and spoke that night and said, I think that was fair. I think it was right at all. When I went to one of the finance meetings, there was a budget on the screen. And I didn't quite understand it because there was something on there that said employees, there was a cost for employees in there. And I thought, wait a minute, the garbage people or they have their employees go pick up the trash. Tonight I heard that the street sweeping and some other things were charged to that budget. And I thought, wait a minute, there again it is. Doesn't everybody have a job description and in that job description, what they're supposed to do? And where the payment's supposed to come from for their pay? How many different pay places do they, do they charge the finance committee for the solid waste? And publicly, how? I don't understand. If you're an employee, you should get paid out of one pool. You shouldn't have to be all the way around. And there were so many things that were said tonight that was just, I was around 2010 and I was at that two, that meeting with rate increases. And I read a lot about 2002, proposition 218. There was a lot of things that was not done right about those water increases. And since then to now, I haven't really been that involved in stuff. When somebody comes to my house and we make a verbal agreement about something, also the things that he didn't do, and then make an agreement about something so something can be done. And then he reneges on it. And that man hasn't been at my house for over a year to talk about a dog attack. But yet he can sit there and post an abatement on my door. Nobody knows how to get a hold of what's happened or to prove, I can prove that I didn't get that he didn't follow the rules. And I lose my car. I lose a sale. I lose my dignity. I lose my pride. And somebody invades my privacy. That's right. So there is something wrong here. Let's make it right. Be conducive and to your repub, to your responsibility to the citizens in this town. I've been here thirty-six years and I ain't going anywhere. So I get on a heart monitor because my heart's bad. I've been really ill the last couple of years. And a lot of this because of my neighbors have been very evil to me. They can do what they did, but I can't say anything about my dog. There's something wrong. Something's gotta be changed. That's all I got to say.
Dwight Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. I see. I read fifty-five pages of staff report on this all off the Facebook. It may be the new medium. It may not be the new medium. But the fact is, what I have witnessed in appears to me by reading these, it appears to me it's mutual combatants between the mayor and our treasurer. Juliana just asked the question, if I were to do this on the internet or on Facebook, would it be wrong? The fact is, it has happened. That's the comment that I want to make towards that. This is mutual combatant. I understand it's been admitted here tonight that people knew about those recall that happened tonight. That it seemed to be out there. This has been going on for seven or since January. They've been mutant, mutual combatants for all this time. On recall, you cannot recall somebody that has been elected until after six months. You cannot recall them when they are up for election within six months. I found it funny that I get this page, this fifty-five pages of action on the day that you can take out your papers to run for his job for treasurer again, if he chooses to do so. I have defended many people on recall and I have been a subject to helping people with recall. But the fact is, I do not know the legality of when you can and when you cannot censor a public, elected public official. I would think that lawyers should be here to actually define that and help determine when you can censure somebody and when you can recall somebody and when you can do it and when it's right and when it's wrong. As far as a 218 fight, it is called a 218 fight. And that is something that the voters in California put in largely in relationship to our proposition thirteen. Because there once was a time when governments would not ask for money they did not need. In the fifties and sixties, every single tax bill ever put on the ballot was there because people trusted their elected officials to put that there for a reason. Two eighteen is of the people. Okay, that is the reason. I think that was one of the comments and one of the arguments that these two gentlemen discussed. It used to be that a protest vote was what it required to get on the ballot years ago, three percent. So if somebody called up city clerks and said, I understand there's going to be an increase in taxes. They were mandated to write that down and that was a protest vote. I have seen over the years that change. And I think it's about time that there would be a committee, a citizens committee to look at the legality of the 318. That's enough.
Right. Anyone else? Seeing no one in the room, if you do want to make a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. We do have someone in person before we move to Zoom. And then we do have a Zoom comment just if the time comes.
Good evening, council mayor. My name is David Hicks. I live on 5630 Dunsmere Avenue. I'm happy to be here for all of you. All of your concerns, mayor. And there's been a lot of emotional discussion because we're all human. But I think there's something else to be, another angle on this that is worth considering. When you take public office and you take an oath, you actually limit your rights somewhat because the oath prescribes your conduct. And I was extremely impressed with Mr. Deutsch's comments earlier, trying to bring this discussion back to the point of what we're doing here. So kind of going back up to the top and coming back down to where I am now. Discussing is when California's constitution was first written, the first thing they put in article one was free speech. Everybody thinks that they have the right to say anything they want, anytime they want to, whoever they want, and it's my right. Well, that's just not true. And you know, the classic case they teach you in law school is you can't, you know, fire in a crowded theater because people get trampled and die. So, but in article two, the very next thing they thought was also equally important. So they put it right there up front was the right to your reputation. The right to your ability to function within a community where what you do and what you say or what quality, what products you put out as, as a restaurateur or something. You live and die by your reputation. Somebody starts saying that, you know, your food's lousy. You're out of business. Some people think because they can eat, they can cook and so they can run a restaurant. And it's, it just isn't how it is. So this right to reputation is of concern to me. There wasn't much said about defamation tonight, but a lot of what was said was from my perspective, defamatory. Some things were said and I read the entire package. I read every email. There were things that were said that were defamatory about the city, about individuals that work for the city, individuals who serve on the city council. So I think that it's important to, to come back to where I started, that we should have, how can I say it? We, we have to take responsibility for our speech. And I think what is going on here is very good. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the room? Seeing no one, we do have a Zoom comment. Person with the mountain as your background. If you could please state your name and address and then go ahead with your comment. You have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, my name's Stephen Bryan. I'm the director of the SISB Community Resource Collaborative in the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. I just want to acknowledge both Peter Art and Juliana as concerned citizens of the community who have helped bring our, our city forward. And there was nothing nefarious going on. I've heard comments, I'm sorry, I ride late to the party tonight. I had other things going on that I had to take care of, but I want to clear up a couple of matters. Being seen in front of the resource center with Juliana and Peter Art had nothing to do with the purchase of the building. Quentin was not there. That was a tour being given to the city of Waireka on the services provided by the Dunsmere Community Resource Center and what could be possible in the city of Waireka. Peter walked up and joined us in the middle of that meeting when we were talking about the history of the Dunsmere Community Resource Center and what has gone on in the last six years. Never in that meeting was anything discussed about purchasing a building. When Juliana, Juliana and I met, Juliana approached me as a concerned citizen. I had offered her in the past a position to, to serve on our board, to serve as a volunteer. She's reached out before and asked how she could help. She cares about Dunsmere passionately. She's very smart. She's very bright. She has a lot to offer. And I accepted those from her. She helped us get our website a couple of years ago. She donated personally $2,000 of her own money. Peter Art has donated numerous times, not only his personal time, but money, the center, the garden. He's been there for multiple businesses that could not stand up on their own and footed the bill for them. A lot of them did not make it. But he kept trying unlike other landlords in the area who were not able to do the same. So I think that everybody should do a little bit of a reality check. And it's about us all coming together and being a community and supporting each other. And what's right for our community and sort of knocking down those that are trying to do what's right and what we need. I'm, I'm available anytime to the person that said a high up official from the resource center verified these things. I would, I would really like to talk to you personally and, and know who this high up official was. I'm the executive director. So I'm not sure who he's talking about. But I am available always and I will be available always. I care about Dunsmere deeply. I hope that my actions for the last six and a half years have spoken for themselves. And I think the town.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. Is there any other public comment on Zoom this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. All right, with that, Mario or Treasurer Rubino, if you would like to rebut any public comment you heard this evening, you do have or agree with it, you have that ability. Mario, if you don't mind coming up and turning on the.
We're just gonna, we're just gonna do this. There's been a lot of warnings and a lot of attempts and I've pushed really hard to get you guys' attention. And it just didn't happen. That didn't matter because that was the time I was a part of the team. And I wanted you guys desperately to succeed. There's one thing that Matthew and the mayor said about Juliana is that she brought a lot of money to the city, $6 million. It's hard to find that in the city. And for me, the biggest problem we've got is a council that can't engage with this community. So we're gonna find out the hard way. There were a lot of attempts trying to converse with you, Mike. And you're pretty busy and hard to keep a little bit of attention. I guess at some point, whether it's being interrupted over something that's fairly important or asked to make staff reports to a council that I can tell doesn't read because they're pretty busy. The bottom line with the city is communication. And this council going out and meeting the citizens. I've been polling for a long time and I've asked you guys to go out and meet the people in this town and talk to them. And it's just nothing that you've done. And yeah, I got frustrated. And yeah, I'm gonna continue until things change. I want to shift.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to council discussion. And I would just like to start off with something here. Over a couple of things that we talked about tonight. The first one being communication. I agree that as a council, we can do better. I've been talking about a few things of ways to reach out to people and get some of the stuff that we're doing as a council out to people. And I will work on that, Mario. So know that. The next thing I want to just address a little bit is a comment made by Mr. Bailey on when we, on having this come out the same day that Mario could pick up papers and you not knowing if Mario could run again. I know that Mario has handpicked a successor who I agree with him is an excellent candidate. To the point where I had someone who I was trying to convince to run to treasurer. And when I heard who Mario had picked as his candidate to run for treasurer, I went. To the point where I had someone who I was trying to convince to run to treasurer, and when I heard who Mario had picked as his candidate to run for treasurer, I went to them and said, hey, why don't you think about doing something else? Just because I thought this person was an excellent candidate. So I did know that Mario was not planning on running again for treasurer and had actually picked someone else out, and I agree with him that they're an excellent candidate. So while yes, the timing was unfortunate for for that, it did have nothing to do with that. I actually personally very much agree with with that. And for the other points you brought up, I'd love to discuss that at some point with you. So the next point of discussion that I just kind of wanted to bring up here before we before anyone else says is kind of explaining something that I have experienced personally. When interacting with Treasurer Rabino. And that is, as I did highlight in here, and they go back further, some of these statements is I became mayor in January, and some of these statements started in January. I went to Mario to try to talk to him to correct them, and the statements kept happening. And I felt that my trust in what he was saying was broken unless he could come up with concrete numbers. Now, I will admit that there are some times where him and I worked excellently together. He he brought something to my attention. It could be definitively shown and proven with numbers, and I ran with it. I worked with him. We come up with great, great numbers. But there were other times when I asked for something from him. And I just couldn't get it. I just couldn't get any kind of like definitive answer. And therefore, because of some of these statements that have been made, I just felt I couldn't trust that. So I just wanted to put that out there that one reason Treasurer Rabino that sometimes you don't feel like you get the best interaction from me is because I don't know if I can trust you based off of some of the things that I've outlined tonight. And I wish I could, because when you, when you come to me with a lot of things, I just, they, we work well together, and we have worked well together. But on things where there's no proof or information, or you won't even give me proof, like I ask you, you come to me, you need to talk to someone. Okay, who do I need to talk to? And then you won't give me a name. I I can't work with that, and it makes me doubt that that story is true. And I would love it if I could work with you better. I truly wish that. I just unfortunately, my trust in you was broken through some of these comments and some of the things that you've said. And that has, that has just also gotten in the way of things. I mean, I know Jake and Bobby, thank you for coming tonight, first off. Mario was one of the people who brought all of that to my attention, along with Councilmember Kessler. And within a day or two of the two of them talking to me, I set up that meeting where the two of us or where we met, we met with Dustin. And I, no, no. No, but the three of the, the two of us met with Dustin and tried to get something going again. And I don't feel like the best result of that has been achieved or the best result that could have been achieved. And while it may have been completely genuine during that whole time or during that time, after Treasurer Rabino learned of our meeting, he warned me a similar warning that just got put out to treasurer or just that just got put out to Councilmember Lucchese through Facebook Messenger of, hey, I hope everything was above board. I hope everything was right. I hope you didn't direct city manager to do anything. Only full council can give direction to the city manager, city manager, which is true. And to this day, I still believe that our meeting there was completely compliant with California fair practices and that we had a good meeting. But but I wasn't sure with Mario making those kind of comments to me that he wasn't trying to make some move against me. And because of that, I pulled back. And for that, I do apologize that we weren't able to do more on that project. But it's it's just a perfect example of how this entire situation, I use this analogy so much during that meeting, it just spiraled out of control, is that Mario may have wanted, Mario wanted to help you guys. He may have wanted to help me, but because I wasn't sure, because I didn't feel like I could trust, because of the situation, it already started spiraling. I don't feel that we achieved the best, the best outcome that we possibly, or the best outcome that we possibly could. We did achieve something, you know, the one business is open and the other is slowly moving forward. But it's just, you can see how it can, how it can all spiral out of control, and we can talk more about this later, but but we can talk more about this later, but you kind of get what I'm saying about how as it all spirals, as it all goes. One thing leads to another. As trust gets broken by comments that aren't true and objectively aren't true, it makes it so hard to work with someone. Just as you have your feelings towards the city manager, I have some of those same feelings towards, well, I'm just saying feelings right now, because your feelings because of your experiences. I have some of those same feelings towards my interactions with Mario over what has been said. And that entire situation, if it just keeps going, won't get the city anywhere, and we need to do better. I know I've gotten a little off topic and a little preaching about one particular example of all this, so I'm gonna let other people discuss, and then we'll move forward from there.
I just gotta, I'll be very calm and say this is clear as I can. An elected official has a responsibility to the people to speak in a way that is telling the truth and not just meant to provoke, just to provoke because you're upset with something. There's a responsibility in this whole thing about this meeting where a couple of people ran into each other down by the community garden. Look at us, still arguing about it. Why? Didn't need to be argued about. This, that's what we're dealing with. I really feel that this was not a matter of the mayor going to combat with Mr. Rabino. I've known Michael ever since I was on the council when he was still in high school or certainly thereafter. And of all the people around here, he's one of the people I trust the most. And if you tell me that you don't think you should respect him and talk to him in a respectful way, and when he tells me what you're doing is hurting the city, I'm gonna listen to him. And if you're gonna tell me I'm bigger than that, I don't have to respect him. I don't have to tell the truth. I can just say what I want to. That's not a matter of freedom of speech if you're an elected official. So that's my thoughts. And if I had heard anywhere along the line that, oh, I'll try better, I'll try to work, I was willing to say I'll vote against it, but I still have not to this moment heard him say that he does have a responsibility to the people that he cares about to tell the truth. Simple as that.
I was also going to make a brief comment, but I don't think I can word it any better than Councilman Deutsch just did. I would just add maybe as a point of testimony. I've worked very constructively at times with Treasurer Rabino, especially on the finance committee, both six years ago for two years and then the last two years. And at times, it has been less constructive due to other professional and personal differences. I would say I have not been impressed by some of his behavior towards our staff, particularly the finance director. I don't take kindly to that sort of abusive behavior. Particularly from an elected official. You do have the honor and responsibility of representing everyone, and you need to conduct yourself with civility. I would also say that if you think communication is the greatest issue, and I tend to agree with that assessment. Providing statements that are factually inaccurate, that you know are inaccurate, doesn't help the communication issue. I would love so much, Mario, to have you be a part of the solution. You're very good at noticing things that are wrong. I actually admire your ability to find things that might be wrong or issues. Why don't you join the team and become part of the solutions? Particularly, why don't you stick to what's truthful and known in your interactions with members of the public?
Anyone else? All right, with that, I move that we sent your Treasurer Rabino for misleading or providing misleading or using his position as treasurer to provide incorrect or misleading information to the public staff and other city officials. Using his position to misrepresent the intent of the city to the public, abuse of staff, failing to timely inform staff and council of information that may impact city finances.
I'll second that, and I do it with great sorrow.
All right, motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
May I request a roll call?
Yeah.
Sure. All right.
Councilwoman Lucchese.
Hi.
Councilmember Brian.
Regrettably, I.
Councilmember Deutsch.
Again, regretfully, I.
Councilmember Kessler.
I don't do such a state.
Mayor Clarno.
Also regretfully, I.
I hope, I hope this leads to some better communication.
So we go next item?
We're gonna do a five minute recess till nine thirty one.
It's already nine thirty. Just go through these.
We'll run through these.
I've been up since five o'clock, bro. Can we just go to?
Let's get this done. All right. It is nine thirty six. I am bringing this meeting back into order. All right, our next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution twenty or two thousand twenty four dash ten Workplace Violence Prevention Policy and Procedure Plan. Before I kick it over to you, Dustin, I just wanted to jump into here because this is actually one of my areas of expertise. So this particular plan is mandated by a new state law. It go went into effect on July first, so we actually need to get this done since we didn't have a July fourth council meeting, understandably. This is something that we need to get done as it is a state mandate. It basically just covers what workplace violence is, who's most likely or who's committing it, times, training. It is extremely important, as I have been told through my industry groups at work in a couple of conferences, that the state is going to be looking after someone to go and nail hard over violations of it. And you do not want to be the first group to be found in violation of this. That being said, I would also spread this around. There is a size limit for businesses that it applies to. It applies to all government agencies, most businesses and small businesses. I don't remember the exact size limit, but please let anyone you know who owns a business have them look up SB five five three, I believe it is. So that way they can make sure they are in compliance with it as well. And with that, I'm gonna kick it over to you, Dustin. All right, Mayor and Council, this has been something on our agenda. The attorney got it to me a few days too late to make the last agenda so we could get it in June, just because of timing of the meeting. So we put it on the first meeting after the the Workplace Violent Prevention Plan. You know, as presented is about eight pages, as Councilmember or Mayor Clarno had said, it just basically outlines the responsibility of you know, what to do when something's reported, how to how to report it, and then what to you know, additional logs and those kind of things, and just conducting an overall risk assessment and those type of actions. So I just asked the council to for any any comments and to adopt the resolution adopting this plan. All right, any questions? All right, with that, I'll open this item up to public comment. Same rules before, three minutes, thirty seconds. Warning. People in the room first, then Zoom. Anybody like to make public comment on this today? Seeing none, I will close public comment.
I'd like to make motion to adopt resolution twenty four, twenty twenty four dash ten, City of Dunsmere Workplace Violence Prevention.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? All right, now we'll move on to item number C, Discussion and Action on Increasing Transient Occupancy Tax. Implishment of measure to be placed on the November twenty twenty four ballot, resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Is this something, what is the timetable in terms of when we would have to have this in?
What was it? Was it August third or eighth?
I believe it's August eighth, which would be our
August eighth was what I was told.
Yeah. I think it was August eighth.
So we wouldn't
I get it confused between that and the council thing, because I think the council thing was the ninth. So I think it's August eighth. I have the document in my office, but I don't have it.
We we would have to make a decision at a regular city council meeting as well. We cannot approve a tax measure to go to the county regular or on a special. I'm sorry.
Well, I just want to run through a few quick things on this, just so everyone can think about it, no matter what action we take today. We have talked extensively about this in finance committee, and I will try to talk as quickly as possible to get us out of here as quickly as possible. We've talked about this extensively in finance committee. We're kind of between two and four percent raise. We are currently at ten percent. Each hotel has voluntarily gone into an additional two percent. So the current rate is at twelve percent for all the hotels and Airbnbs. This are, so we would either be raising it to a fourteen percent overall with their two percent for Discover Siskiyou that they voluntarily go into or sixteen percent. The overall consensus from finance committee was we should do the tax. There was there was some question on whether it should be at that two or four percent level. At the time, Vice Mayor Brian and myself tended towards four percent. The difference in overnight hotel rates for the room is only a dollar or two. And then unfortunately or was then a man Treasurer Rabino wanted two or preferred two percent. And I don't remember if Len Foreman was at one of the meetings.
Len was not at the second one when you
He was the first and
You made the recommendation.
We didn't take an official roll call, but he he was generally of the opinion that tourists don't shop around based upon the DOT rate. I would also add, since the finance committee meeting and apparently between the time when Mario had a chance to talk, I've actually briefly touched base with some hotel owners on the subject. Naturally, there was some hesitancy, of course. They did also mention that, you know, timing wise of where we're at with tourism and Dunsmere wanting to grow it, doesn't seem like a great time to add it. They would almost be more in favor of staying with the, everyone kind of feels more comfortable staying at the twelve percent or two percent increase, because that's where everyone else is around us. One, the Cape Springs ownership actually expressed some interest, maybe in the future of doing a dedicated tax similar to the T bid, but for just Dunsmere in the future. So another increase, but really make sure it is dedicated to tourism infrastructure. The owners there really wanted me to tell council, hey, we're for the city of Dunsmere. We understand you have the tax. With their recent renovation, though, they think it would be a big jolt to go for.
So, and I'm gonna jump in here with one or two quick things. First off, for anyone who doesn't know, we're discovering a TOT tax is a hotel tax. So basically, it is the tax rate that is charged on the hotels in the city when you stay a night. So it is charged to individuals of Airbnbs and hotels when they spend the night, the hotel then collects that tax, and then it is passed on to the city of Dunsmere.
Same with Airbnb.
Yep. So that's the first thing I wanted to touch on. The second thing I wanted to touch on is something that I did mention in the center. There is potentially an issue with our current TOT tax. We have directed the city manager or the city manager has directed this or talked to John Kenny, and he is currently looking into it. We'll get that an answer back to Dustin as soon as he can. And then in the meantime, Dustin and I also talked, and we felt that it would be good to go back to the county election records back in the nineties and just kind of see if we can clear it up. Basically, just resolve or revolves around it. How and when some, you know, it is. But the other reason I think that both finance committee chair, Brian and myself agree that we should probably move on this too, is if there is an issue with the current TOT passing it or having the voters of the city pass a new one, so this rate change from the current ten to twelve percent. It's not technically raising it to two percent. It is installing a new tax at twelve percent. So therefore, by having the citizens if there is any kind of So therefore by having the citizens, um, if there is any kind of issue, it is important to get this on the ballot now. As the T O T, uh, is an extremely important source of revenue for the city. Um, and by having the voters vote on this new tax, and this was confirmed by John Kenny, um, in the phone call that. City manager Reeve and I were in, that if, if this gets put out to ballot and it is passed by the voters, it. Will make it so that way any issue that currently exists is fixed.
So what, what I'm sensing is, is that, uh, your recommendation is, is that we should do this now. Um, and so that we have it on the ballot and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but we're making the effort. And then at the same time, I assume that what I've heard is you're recommending a two, two percent.
Yes, I feel like it's more important, I, you know, originally the two of us were thinking more four percent. But after Matthew talked to some of the hotels, um, and I talked to John Kenny, uh, I feel like it is more important that we put a number, you know. We're kind of putting a number, the number we wanted, but especially since it's a tax on hotels and Airbnb or not hotels. It is a tax on the people who stay at hotels and the people who stay at Airbnbs. Um, we feel that there's, there should be plenty of support on that as it doesn't directly affect any of the citizens in Dunsmere unless they choose to take.
And of course, that's one of the reasons to do this instead of asking for another raise on taxes for the people, so.
Yes, um, so this, so that's one reason why I have also kind of switched over to wanting twelve percent instead of, or going to twelve percent instead of going to fourteen percent. Is I just want to make this as likely to pass as possible, um, just in case there is any issue that.
I mean, the, the argument for four percent was to make it more impactful. The two percent only raises an estimated sixty thousand a year, which is certainly helpful, but it's not like. I, I was hoping to raise, if we did four percent, that would be enough to fund the chamber as we would have always dreamed to get more marketing efforts in this town. This will help, but it's a little bit less impactful.
Yeah, the thing is, is we can always at some point, the T O, a T O T tax is the easiest tax to pass. Um, so at some point, if this passes with overwhelming support, then we can go back and do a four percent. If it passes, you know, fifty five percent to forty five percent, well, then maybe we know that we're at the, the level the citizens feel is appropriate.
Public comment?
Um, yep, so unless anyone has any other clarifying questions.
I just wanted to state that I, I did place the multiple resolutions, so when you do adopt, then make sure you, uh, select the resolution that, um, the percentage. That way we had all of the information available to the public, whether it was twelve, thirteen or fourteen percent. So I did, I did add in the thirteen percent after there was some hesitancy from the, from the agent, from the previous. So it is up for discussion, but it feels that the council is looking at twelve. Staff's recommendation is just requesting an adoption of one of the ballot measures.
Okay, all right, unless there's any other clarifying questions, I'll open this up to public comment. I know, I see that, so, um, I'm going to open this up to public comment, I do see there's a hand raised on Zoom. But first, is there anyone in the room who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will go to the Zoom comment, I believe that looks like David Edmondson's picture up there. So you should be unmuted now and I will. All right, Dave, you should be, uh, unmuted and good to go.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Well, we can.
Good, this is David Edmondson, I live at six zero two, three Butterfly Avenue. And I am, and I object to the T O T increase and here's why. This is something I don't hear anyone else talk about, but I would argue that T O T puts government in direct competition with local businesses. And here's why, let's say, uh, somebody is vacationing in Dunsmere. I would argue that most people who vacation in Dunsmere are doing so on a budget. Those with unlimited budgets are probably, say they're going fly fishing, they would probably go to Montana, Wyoming or Alaska. I don't mean to disparage Dunsmere in any way, I chose to live here, I love it here. But for someone who is vacationing here on a budget, uh, say a fourteen, fourteen percent. Rate on hotel occupancy, a hundred dollar hotel room is then fourteen dollars. That's fourteen dollars that they do not have to spend at the pizza factory, at the bakery. And you add that up over the course of a week, seven times fourteen is what, uh, a hundred bucks? That's a hundred dollars that somebody doesn't have, uh, to spend it in Dunsmere at local businesses. Uh, you say it doesn't, doesn't affect local citizens, well, those businesses employ local citizens. Look at, look how many people work at the pizza factory or at the bakery. So, uh, I object to an increase in T O T, period.
All right, uh, thank you. All right, is there any other public comment this evening? So you want to come up and ask it just, just to be official?
It said twelve, we're at two, make it fourteen.
So, all right, ask the question and then we'll close.
Are you going to raise it only two percent or are you going to raise it fourteen percent? I didn't understand what he just said.
Okay, I will.
I got totally lost, like.
Yep, well, I'll, I'll make sure to explain that for you when we come back around in our comments.
Yeah, fourteen percent is a lot, two percent is okay.
Mark Rez, fifty seven forty four, can you also, so it's, it's, it's twelve plus two is fourteen. Does that include the tax for discovery, is it discovery or?
I'll address that when I get, yeah, I'll answer that question for you.
But I, 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 I concur with Wade, um, Gibson.
Okay.
You put it very well.
Thank you. All right, is there any other further public comments this evening?
I guess I'm concerned about two things, this tax is supposed to go in the general fund, that way you only need a fifty percent vote. Whether, where if you had a special cause for it, where you actually knew where you were going to use the money, then it would be a higher rate. I also, a comment was made in the past. That T O T tax is the way to go because it's not going to hurt anybody in town. We just heard some examples of that. The fact is, the people, there are many people in town that you do have Airbnbs that are local. On the planning commission, when we looked at. The amount of businesses, the amount of people who are involved, we lost about thirty and we gained about thirty.
I just wanted to know that that hasn't bought out, but it is a possibility if I raise.
Thank you. Um, and speaking of further public comments. I will close public comment on this item for this evening, but maybe first can I clarify the, yeah. So it is what we are proposing is our current rate, which is any percent. And we are proposing moves that, well. So we are proposing your, we're going to talk about the most likely explanation here, moving on to the end focus, so two percent. Now on top of the city's T O T tax, all the hotels in Dunsmere or in the county and Airbnbs are subject to this as well. Um, there was a big vote, they chose to take two percent additional of their rent and that is with our T O Ts. So it is not part of a T O T, it is a voluntarily program that they instituted themselves to go to the fund discovered system. And so our P O T is everything that is tech related, and by the way, there's an additional two percent on top of the hotels. Chose to be part of, um, they just collect it with it. So the total rate currently is twelve percent and, uh, if it didn't pass by the voter, or if we didn't put it on the ballot and it passed by the voters, it would be fourteen percent. Including last government system.
And they clarified that would match the county and Mount Shasta.
That's what I was going to ask.
It wasn't just. My last statement is it's the twelve plus two.
Okay.
And, and so was the, they both adopted those within the last, I don't know, year.
Well, to speak to, 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 to comment, uh, we did do an analysis, the finance committee, where we looked at. Hotel rates in Mount Shasta, most obvious competition, and where our compliance have been raising it even to the four percent of a fourteen plus two. And even at sixty percent horrible, very non testing, poorly presented, we were still over twenty percent deeper in Dunsmere still. So we think that in a good indication that would still be a higher value area apart of that, but it certainly is something, uh, we wanted. So we live at state.
All right, sounds like we're good, okay.
I know that, uh, the idea of raising any tax is going to be challenging and, and, uh, problem. When I talk about the idea that this doesn't hit the people the same way another tax would. One of the things that I think gets lost is the idea that we don't make up what the expenditures are. It costs money and so if we have to raise money in order to meet our budgets, then we have a choice. Right now we have a choice in the sense that we could say, okay, let's go out and try and raise the tax, the T U T tax. Let's try and get some other money and that would go directly to the people, it would come out of their buying things everywhere. What this is simply saying is, is that as, as the finance committee noted, um, we're in competition with Mount Shasta. If you will, in terms of where they're going to stay if they're coming to the South County. And, uh, between the two, um, we're simply looking at being the same as Mount Shasta. And I think that doing that instead of coming up right now with the new T U T tax is better for the community in general. And will help us fund the government, which we're responsible for doing, thank you.
Any other discussion?
How do we do this, you said there's different resolutions, which is which?
So resolution, if you're choosing twelve, so resolution, um, which be attachment B, which is pages ninety eight, ninety nine and one hundred.
Are you wanting to make a?
We can just.
See where we are in it, yeah.
You can choose that and then, uh, it, that one has, and then maybe read part of the resolution where identifies the tax.
No, wait, I'm in the wrong spot, no, I, resolution adopting.
You ready, it's, it's.
I move that we adopt the resolution adopting twelve percent transient occupancy tax ballot measure.
I will second that.
With the friendly amendment of numbering the resolution twenty twenty four dash twelve.
Yes, you're right, thank you.
And I believe we need to identify the measure, like sometimes it's measure A, measure P.
Oh, no, no, the clerk will do that.
Okay.
Don't touch that.
Got it, nevermind.
They're very particular.
That's. All right, um, this, this will be a roll call vote, yeah.
Councilmember Lukeye.
Aye.
And Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Deutsch.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
And Mayor Clarno.
Hi, motion.
Notice I have my mouth right up, it's a microphone there.
All right, and with that, um, I haven't even seen future, already have, we do have quite a lot on our future agenda items. I know you had something, if you want to just talk to me about that, we can talk about getting on the, on a future one, so, cool. Um, you and I can meet and chat about that, just so that way we can get out of here, all right, all right, second. Hi, motion, meeting adjourned.